Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Kyle, for starting. It is seven o'clock on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the GBOS regular meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute forty-four dot six-two dot three-one-zero and Anchorage Municipal Code one point two-five, public meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I'll call this thing into order at seven o'clock. I am Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and fire department supervisor, also in the room.
Kayway, Parks and Recs, I'm Terry supervisor.
Mike Edgerton, Housing Economic Development Supervisor.
Thank you. And Amanda Sassy is excused tonight, and I do not know if Jennifer is on her way. Okay, are there any disclosures tonight? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I will read the land acknowledgement. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood is situated between the areas known to be Denina and Alutik homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples. We just did roll through disclosures. And Jennifer Wingard has just made her way in the room. Any agenda, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
We will approve the agenda, but I have some potential amendments.
Okay. Thank you for the second. What are the amendments?
There's a couple of things on here that we might want to act on before X meeting. Especially if we move that meeting to the twenty-second. So the one thing is completely missing is potential update on the cemetery, on the resolution in favor of cemetery bond. Since it looks like we may have a bond appearing on the two thousand and twenty-four ballot, I think it might make sense to update that.
Okay.
So I propose that goes into new business and depending on making changes to our meeting schedule, maybe move that along business, but we can delay the last part. So we'll add one item to new business.
What business?
New business for now, and if we change the date.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you, guys. Any further questions? The objections to approving the agenda as amended? Okay, agenda as amended is approved. And we have meeting minutes from December, or sorry, December seventh, and then before that, November twentieth. I entertain a motion to approve both sets of meeting minutes.
Who to approve both sets of minutes?
You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any objections? Okay, minutes are approved for December seventh and November twentieth. Meeting announcements. Yes.
I'm sorry. I'd be happy to take the chair, or I'm sorry that I missed two minutes.
You, I'd be happy for you to take it.
Okay.
So moving on to announcements, then, Jennifer.
Okay. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand. We'd like to be acknowledged. To help discuss and stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. I do want to draw some attention to that point there. We've had some recent board meetings where that has not functioned that way. So just as a reminder, we keep our comments focused on the business under discussion and provide your comments to the board or through the chair, please. Same thing of the next point. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. I'm going to state that one of the ways that I'd like to see that manifested is that we avoid in any way denigrating somebody's understanding of a subject and stick to strictly voicing our opinions and understanding that they may differ. But at no point is it acceptable for this, any member of this board or public to denigrate somebody's understanding of a subject. GBOS committees will hold their elections at their January two thousand and twenty-four regular meetings. GBOS seats A and B terms end in two thousand and twenty-four. We'll be on the April GBSA ballot. Filing at the municipal clerk's office is between January twelfth and January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. And more information is available at the Elections Candidate Information Uni.org. For anchor board training is scheduled for Tuesday, February twenty-seventh at five p.m. in the Girdwood Community Room. All are welcome to attend, so you don't have to be on a board or want to be on a board or anything else. It's an important part of being active in our community. I do have a potential disclosure, but I am going to wait till we get to that item and then I will turn over the chair. All right, moving on. Introductions, presentations, and reports. We'll start with, if we have Senator Kathy Geisel, she with us today?
She is. I'll look for her to come back. I think she.
Hi, Madam Chair, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
Cool, all right. Sorry, I always scramble to find the little microphones and so forth. Yes, thank you very much. So, Madam Chair, my main report tonight is kind of the news that probably everyone is reading is about the budget that the governor released. I do want to emphasize that the budget that the governor introduces is a proposed budget. The final decision, of course, falls to the legislature itself. It is a budget that has a one billion dollar deficit in it, which he is proposing we take from our constitutional budget reserve. That's our savings account. That savings account has two point eight billion dollars in it right now. It is the cash flow that provides for the state during the year. As bills come in, the revenue may not be keeping up with it, so we use that savings account for cash flow, just perhaps you and I do with our checking accounts and our savings accounts. So it is deeply concerning to me, as well as other senators, the idea of taking that billion dollars out of our savings account. Another concern is the very large dividend that the governor is proposing again. This is what is, he often refers to as air quotes, the full dividend. The cost for that full dividend is two point three billion dollars. And it would be a three thousand four hundred dollar dividend approximately for every man, woman, and child. It's one point four billion dollars more than we spent on the two thousand and twenty-three dividend that just went out. So so these are all arm wrestles we'll be having with the governor. We'll also be arm wrestling over K-12 education funding. He has removed the one-time funding increase that we put in last year. And the K-12 education formula amount is actually decreased as well due to a decrease in student enrollment. So so education is a top priority of the Senate majority bipartisan coalition. So we'll be looking at that very, very hard. And something he omitted, which is a concern to me, is the senior benefits. It's a very, very small program. It amounts to twenty-one million dollars for the state. It means a lot for our senior citizens, our retirees here. So I think you'll probably see that being restored by the legislature. So those are just a few highlights. I do go into a lot more depth in my newsletter. Anyone that would like to receive that, please just give me a shout, an email, a phone call, whatever, and I'd be happy to add you to that. We will be taking ongoing deep dives into this budget, not only up till session, but after session starts, of course. The session begins the day after Martin Luther King Day, so that's January sixteenth this year. So thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Do we have any questions from the board? Or in the room? All right. Thank you so much for that report and for taking the time, Senator Geisel. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. I would assume Representative Laddie Shaw is not with us this evening?
I don't see anybody, no.
Okay, and do we have any representative from the mayor's office? I can't, doesn't look like. All right. And so moving on to that, do we have Randy Salt?
Randy's here.
Excellent.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so let's see what we have here for you all today. So I won't go into snow a whole lot, other than I know some of you may work in Anchorage. The administration website has some great numbers and some details on what's been plowed, what's owned by municipality, LURCs, or state. Some of the numbers are, if you have a berm you need to clear, or if you need a, if you have someone that's a senior citizen and needs help, you can call those numbers. And from what I've seen, those numbers have been pretty responsive, so I'm really happy with that. As far as what's ahead on the assembly schedule, we didn't have our joint school board ASD meeting last week, so I hope school boards are, we did ask a couple, I sent a couple of questions to them around their budget shortfall, as well as the use of online learning days versus snow days. We had a housing and homeless committee meeting on Wednesday, and then on Tuesday, we have our regular assembly meeting, which we should have a few things coming up at that meeting. First, we'll see a couple ballot propositions. I believe AO two thousand and twenty-three dash one-one-four, what we call Anchorage Go, which is around the Portland Lou and putting those around Anchorage. I'll put that on the ballot for them to vote on. AO two thousand and twenty-three, yes, fifty-nine, the Chicago State Park will not be on the ballot, on the agenda, be open on the January ninth. We will see AO two thousand and twenty-three dash one thirty and one oh three, and those deal with three and fourplexes, making them easier to build by just cleaning up some code. Right now, three, fourplexes based on units, number of units are considered commercial and therefore fall under a lot of the commercial standards. So we're trying to push that into residential and base it more on square feet. We're not expanding where you can build it. You can still build in the same areas. But one way to look at it is, I could build a four thousand square foot house on a lot, but I couldn't build a four thousand square foot triplex or fourplex. So we'll keep some things such as landscaping requirements, snow storage requirements, and other requirements, but just trying to make that permitting process just a little bit easier to build. We'll also see, I believe it's this week, AO two thousand and twenty-two, yes, one-one-eight. And that's regarding, the state has passed, and the municipality is considering passing drive-through marijuana shops, as well as free samples, potential for samples. So that'll be an interesting debate, I am sure. I think you all saw that the budgets were passed, budgets were vetoed, and the veto was overridden, so that is in place at this time. See here, sorry, just wanted to my notes. We will see some funding for the Anchorage Coalition and homelessness, and that's really starting to work on the plan when the cold weather shelters are demobilized, that we have resources in place, so we don't have sort of the mass exodus from like the soloing we did last year. And then we're also looking to possibly fund some pallet shelters, another trial for the municipality. We'll see a bond initiative for ASD for sixty-two million, and I'm sure that'll pass and go on to the ballot. Let's see what else we might have on here that's of interest. So we may, we may pass, hopefully we'll pass the Port of Alaska recommendation from the naming commission to be called the Don Young Port of Anchorage. That's come up before, and we postponed it to this night, so hopefully we'll see that come through. Looking forward to it. And then I know there's some interest in the short-term run of legislation. We're going to have a work session on, I believe it's January ninth. And we have postponed it to January twenty-third. Not in a hurry, there is an S version coming. So more to come in that space. Again, not in a hurry, so we'll try to get as much feedback as we can. And I guess with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
I think I had one quick question. Just, I think I missed, I didn't quite hear you. Did you say that the work session is on January ninth for the STR, or did it get rescheduled to the twenty-third?
I believe the work session's on the ninth, and that should be a Friday. And the ordinance was postponed to the twenty-third, so we're having the work session ahead of the the meeting, the assembly meeting.
Thank you, Jennifer. I thank you, Randy. I had the same question, but I think your meetings are the ninth and the twenty-third of January, and you just said the work session is the same day?
So the work session, if the ninth is a Tuesday, sorry, then it would be the fifth. I don't have it in front of me, so it's for that Friday.
Got it. Okay, the Friday. That's helpful. Thank you.
Did you have a question as well, Guy?
Yeah, thanks, Randy. Just a question. I know, I think Tommy O'Malley had reached out to you and Zach about their bond proposition for the cemetery. I haven't heard anything, maybe just, have you heard anything on that or that standard?
So I've been seeing the emails going back and forth. Right now, I believe it is with Bond Council trying to prepare that, and I have seen some requests to get that pushed to January ninth, which will be the last day to introduce it. And then we would have to pass it on the twenty-third, and that just allows for communities such as Girdwood more time to respond and weigh in favor or against. So I get, my guess is we're probably not going to make this meeting since we haven't seen it on the ballot, and we would need to introduce it on the floor. And I haven't seen the final come through today, so that means we would have to do it tomorrow. And even if we introduced it on the floor, on the floor, there really isn't a sense of urgency that we need to do it tomorrow night, because we could also do it at the first meeting in January.
Thank you very much for that. So January nine, the vote on the twenty-third, is that correct?
That's the timing we're looking at, looking, looking like will happen right now.
Perfect, thanks.
See, Brett has a question. Is that right?
Yes, but I think we have a question from Mike, too, here.
Okay, yep.
But I think I missed something you said earlier. Did you say that the state park or the Trugatch State Park access bond is not going to make it onto the onto this year, or did I miss it?
It won't make tomorrow night's, it won't be on tomorrow night's agenda.
It won't make tomorrow night's, but it might be on the ninth.
It will be on, yeah, no, it's, sorry, yeah, gosh, it will be on the ninth, yes, it will be on the ninth. There is also a work session for it as well on the fifth.
Got it. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the board? All right, and actually, let me take Brett, since his hand has been out. Brett, Will, thanks.
Yeah, thanks for that. I just, quick question. Randy, do you know, in a land use area, when it was three and fourplexes being built, or there was still a state requirement for electrical inspection, say, and that's kind of a safety inspection, is that still going to be required as this changes three and fourplexes into, say, residential designation somehow?
You would still have the electrical inspection.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And Brian, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Randy, Brian, Vernon here. Are you, you're probably aware that the Girdwood Trails Plan is going to be coming before the assembly at one of the January meetings. And we are going to be having that hopefully approved by the assembly so that we can improve, that we can include it in the Girdwood Area Plan that we're developing. And I hope you're prepared to vote in favor of the, of the trails plan that has been put together by the community.
Yes, we look forward to that. I don't, I haven't heard anything negative towards it, so I expect it to go through fairly easily.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So do we have any further questions? All right. Excellent. Thank you so much for your time. Very informative. We appreciate that.
Thanks.
Next up would be Zach. I didn't see him listed, but is Zach Johnson with us this evening? It doesn't look like.
It looks like he was traveling somewhere.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm going to go ahead and move on then. I also didn't see Margot Bellamy or any other representative from the school board liaison, but if I'm right or wrong about that, please let me know. All right.
The report's in the packet, just.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll show it up here on the board, sorry. Yep.
Yes. It's a concise, good report. All right. So moving on to supervisor reports, I'll start with Brianna.
I do, thank you. This is my report for fire departments. I was remiss to say in my November report that I did reach out to Melissa Shaganoff regarding our land acknowledgement and did not hear back. I asked again for this month and have not heard back. Also, I attended in November a clinic meeting organized by Linda Mankoff regarding the Girdwood House List, following a visit by the Anchorage Coalition to End Homelessness, and the Coalition presented to a group with approaches. And as the fire department supervisor, I felt the information that our first responders experienced was very appropriate. Also, I attended the Safer Stewart Highway presentation here in the community room, that a lot of the community was here, so I urge anyone that hasn't visited the website to submit your comments to the team that's working on that. Also, side note, the Glacier Valley Transit has a new updated app, so if you would like to know whenever the shuttle's coming, they have a new app there, a location. The cemetery update we just had from Representative Salt, but Mr. Gates, who's the council, has been emailing, because I've been asking when it wasn't on the agenda for the addendum that was sent on Friday. So he's saying January ninth, which is that last possible time. I also had the Girdwood Fire Board meeting last week, and they discussed the twenty-three budget auditing of the last two years' budgets and the two thousand and twenty-four budget. And their annual meeting is January sixteenth. It's open to everyone, it's at the fire station, and I'd like to thank them for all their service, and I'm sure Chief Weston will have an update that. Lastly, I would just add on another side note for the community, anyone participating in the solstice event this Thursday, I think five K to park as far away as you can, so that any emergency vehicles, if they need to get on that road, the fire lane is free for a turnaround with a fire truck. That is all.
Thank you. Mike?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I have a, it's been a very busy month. I have a bunch of things. Been attending the assembly meetings, as Randy mentioned, the budget was passed. We have a few, we had a few things of interest in the budget, which passed. There's also been a lot of work on housing strategy. There was a work session approximately a week ago on the housing strategy from the assembly. I took part in that. Emphasizing the Girdwood specific things. There is a, one section which acknowledges that Girdwood has a distinct set of problems and tasks, and the assembly will pay attention to it. Any plan that comes from Girdwood itself, Girdwood specific plans. There was also an issue around vacant housing. They define vacant housing in two distinct ways, and it matters one way to us, a different way, perhaps in downtown. That hopefully will pass the assembly tomorrow. I've also been following closely on the bond proposal for cemetery. There is also a potential ballot proposal for the fire and EMS property exemption that we discussed in the past, and we passed a resolution on. I have interest from, there's interest from two different assembly members to do that, but that will also need to be introduced by the January ninth meeting in order to make it onto the to be passed by the end of January in order that it can make it on ballot in April. I've been paying attention to the HLB work plan since that was mentioned, and the first version of it was published. A pre-draft version of it was published at the HLB Advisory Committee meeting last week. There's a couple of, I'd say surprises in there, which I've been trying to track down. STR regulations we'll be covering on later. Safer Stewart Highway also attended. The same meeting that Brianna mentioned about the unhoused population in Girdwood, I've been paying quite a lot of attention to that recently, and that's one of the things that that led to the temporary workforce housing proposal we have later on tonight, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Guy.
Just maybe real quick here, they, as Brian mentioned, the the trail plan's going to go for a vote on the twenty-third of January, and I just occurred to thought like to if you support it or not, that'd be a time for the public.
Thank you. And do we have Amanda? I didn't see Amanda. All right. Thank you. Looks like that we essentially ended up incorporating committee updates to GBOS on much of what was just previously said. Do we have any supervisors who have anything to add to what was already? Yes.
That's a separate agenda topic, because in the past, we had a chair of one of the committees who felt that there were some items that they had a different take on, so anyway.
Sure, no, I just was checking if we had anything to add from the board members first, and then I was going to check with the
Okay.
The, but yes, okay. I do see that we have both Brett and Matt online from GHEC, and I don't know if we have anybody wanting to speak to any of the other community, community members, but let me start with one of you, if you guys would, does either one of you want to provide a summary of what you've been working on?
Well, this is, yeah, this is Brett. I can at least try to get us up to speed a little bit here. It's, our meeting frequency is just a little bit out of sync with GBOS, so maybe as we get into the new year, we can look at ways to try to get better in sync, but I didn't hear, out of all those meetings attended, I didn't hear any kind of update about what GHEC is working on. We had a couple items still on the agenda, but primarily, there's some other data discovery that's been going on that's very particular to Girdwood. We haven't seen some of this proposed draft language for changing Title Twenty-One that has been introduced on the agenda tonight. We just haven't had opportunity as the panel of seven to consider that. So we look forward to at least incorporating that in some of our suggested policy changes that we've been working on. So it'll be interesting to hear how that progresses and see how the committee can get into some of the details as to the impacts and potential benefits for Girdwood. So unless Matt has anything else to add, I think the rest of the items might be on the agenda.
Yeah, this is Matt. Nothing to add currently. If any comments are raised, are raised during either old business or new business at those points. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any members of committees wanting to speak up for Girdwood Trails, UC, PSEC, or Cemetery, please let me know, but otherwise, I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Status of Proposed Girdwood Developments. This is a standing item, and it is listed in the meeting packet. Do we have any updates? Yes, can I?
One thing, and we haven't had this on here because we had to have a representative for it, but Tim Charon's here, and he's part of the HLB Advisory Committee. And he could provide an update. I don't think, do we have him on the agenda directly? I don't think we did, so maybe back under committees.
Okay, did you say he's online?
No, no, Tim's here in the room.
Oh. Right, sorry.
We have, he's actually in person.
I'm so, I'm sorry.
Would you like to speak up about?
Thank you. Tim Charon, I'm a member of the Heritage Land Bank Commission, taking over the seat from Ron Tenney, who was term expired. And a couple items to share with you were routine business coming up at the next Commissioner's meeting on January twenty-fifth. There'll be two lease extensions proposed. Those are in the Anchorage area. More information about those will be available on the HLB website after the first of the year. Probably of greater importance to the community is a different work item, and that is, as Mike highlighted, the annual work program for two thousand and twenty-four. There is a draft working plan out. It is also available on the HLB website. This is a annual plan. It outlines the scope of work proposed by HLB in the upcoming year. The last one was approved in October, and as I reviewed that, there were a lot of community on that plan back in, back in October. HLB is trying to get their annual work program out. HLB is trying to get their annual work program out a little sooner this year. It may come out for official public comment. It will come out for official public comment. Most likely in January, there will be a 45-day public comment period on the work plan. Couple of things that I do want to highlight in the work plan as proposed is continued work on the Girdwood industrial site. Continued work on the community land trust proposal for work in the Girdwood South Townsite. And also disposal of a portion of HLB parcel 6011, which is for the Glacier Creek Village Development Proposal. There's a little bit more information than what was on their plan previously. It specifically identifies acreage for disposal for a mixed-use project to be developed by Aliasko Holdings. Again, this plan will be out for public comment. Most likely in January, there will be a 45-day public comment period. And then the HLB Commission will meet subsequent to that and to make their recommendation to HLB. Lastly, I plan to be in person at the Girdwood Land Use Planning Meetings to present this type of information. But I wanted to come tonight to introduce myself. This is the first public opportunity I had to say hello and look forward to working with the Land Use Committee, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and everybody else who has interest in activities and plans affected by the Heritage Land Bank. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Given the importance of HLB decisions, land use decisions for the Girdwood area, it's fantastic to have that report in person. So much appreciated. Did you have questions?
I just wanted to say thanks.
Anything we have a question for Matt?
Yeah, it was a, a good comment. First of all, thank you again. It's, you jumped straight to the first meeting. It's a great question. Obviously great, a great candidate, experience. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I should have mentioned this in my report earlier, I think, but I followed up with HLB. They had a position approved by the Assembly earlier this year for a consultant to help work with any disposals like Holton Hills. They put out an RFP earlier this year. They got no, they got no submissions for the RFP. My understanding is they have a slightly more restricted targeted RFP in the next couple. So we should see that here. So presumably someone will be attending every time.
Do you have anything to, okay, excellent. Thank you. Moving on to service provider reports, we'll start with Chief Weston.
Hello there. So first, happy holidays and thank you to all of our Girdwood Board of Supervisors and Assembly members and community members that have supported our team throughout the year. We are still trending on having around 30 calls a month. So we rolled into December with about 450 calls. Wanted to share with you that I'm very happy that the Santa Claus Parade is going on Saturday, December 23rd. And we will be starting at 6:30, which is usually actually Girdwood time. So it might be like 10 minutes later after 6:30, but we're going to stage at 6:15. And anybody is welcome to decorate their vehicle with lights and join us in the parade. And the parade usually takes about an hour and 15 minutes and we will go around the community. Thank you to Aliasko Resort for having Santa Bart. Steve Bartholomew is Santa this year on the float. And Wildlife Center is joining us and it should be, thank you to Tim for being the DJ that's going to play the simulcast music. And it's just going to be a wonderful community event. As we trend down towards the end of the year, I'm focusing on grant compliance documents. Part of the pros and cons about getting a lot of grants is a lot of grant compliance work that has to happen at the end of the year. We are looking like we might be slightly over budget at the end of the year. We'll know more in a couple of weeks how that plays out. Other than that, the team is training hard and very enthusiastic. And it's just an honor to be part of the fire department in Girdwood. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Chief Weston. Yes, Guy.
Thank you, Chief Weston. This is Guy. Hey, I sure appreciated your encouragement, your outreach to dig out fire hydrants. And it looks like it's been pretty successful, you know, and seeing a lot of fire hydrants pop up after the big snowstorm. I did notice on the news not too long ago that Aewu is responsible for digging out the Anchorage Fire Hydrants. Do they have that responsibility? They must not down here, but I don't know if that's ever been.
Yeah, it has. Kyle and I have contacted them and talked to them many times. And I'll let Kyle answer that question on the, because it was a service area issue. But that has been discussed many times.
And they do come and do it, but it isn't like it's consistent. So, because it's all, what they do is they take service, field service people and then send them out to field to dig out hydrants. And so when they have a lull and they can let those people go, then they let them out. But if they have repairs going on or anything like that, they don't have the personnel. They're just sitting around to go dig hydrants. So, so in the past, they've maybe gotten out maybe once, maybe twice in the winter to do it. But it's usually like two guys and they're trying to go around town and dig all the hydrants out and then they get called off. So it's just not consistent. So having this neighborhood program works a lot better because people adopt a hydrant, they go over, they get it done and it's consistently open. And the road crews try to keep up with them as they can too. So, so yeah, it's, if they had dedicated hydrant staff, it may be more consistent, but they don't.
And so, yeah, for the first couple of years, I was like hounding them on like, you haven't come to Girdwood yet. And then, yeah, then it was the discovery that, well, they're actually not supposed to come to Girdwood only maybe twice a year. So, and then if you have a hydrant that is like cemented in with snow, let me or Kyle know. If you let me know, I'll tell Kyle or you can tell Kyle directly. And then he can work to make it freed with equipment if it's like absolutely impossible to get out with, because we don't want anybody to get a back injury. So.
Yeah, thank you. No, it looks like your program is working well. I was just curious about that. Thanks.
Do we have any further questions for Chief Weston? All right. Excellent. Thank you, Chief Weston. Very helpful. All right, moving on to Chief Asher.
Could you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so far this, for, I just sent Kyle and Margaret just now our monthly stats for November. And in November, we had total of 158 calls for service. Majority of our calls for services in the Girdwood area were just security checks, business checks, and area checks. That's just usually at nighttime and daytime, officers do that. The other thing is we're still maintaining our traffic stop and traffic calls. We've had roughly 27 calls for service on traffic or DUI or parking type issues. Throughout the month and this month, we continue to assist as need be for placarding vehicles that need be towed by Girdwood. And just, we're just keeping up with just regular calls out there and maintaining high visibility presence. We're looking forward to New Year's evening. We have, I said it last minute, we basically have overlapping coverage set up for New Year's events in Girdwood to ensure that there's enough officers. We'll have a minimum of two officers on during the key hours of New Year's, up to three officers. Other than that, other things that went on is during this last month, we sent one of our officers down to text on a tactical training. Spent a week down there, Officer Garcia did. And he's looking forward to doing some teaching in, with the Whittier Police Officers on certain things he's learned down there. Additionally, I attended the annual Chiefs Conference Anchorage, sponsored by the FBI National Academy of Associates in Alaska. And there's some good information that I'm going to be passing on to patrol and staff here in Whittier PD. Other than that, if you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any questions from the board? None, and I've seen none online. Thank you for the report. Very helpful. Rhodes, Parks, Kyle.
Sure. Let me switch some things up here. Sorry, just trying to run the whole. Okay. We have been busy with snow and more snow and then more snow coming. So, and then with occasional rainstorm in there. So first off, I want to give a huge thanks to our volunteer crew on the Norrist Trails. We've been wallowing in snow for the last month and it's been a very much of a venture trying to get those trails in and not get the machines stuck and get things going and keep at it. But it's been working and we thank Aliasko Resort for their support of sending out a cap, which just makes a huge difference for us. When that, the snow has been particularly really light, so the machines just want to sink in them. So getting a firm base has been good. And then ideally, actually that rainstorm that came in the other night and it turned the snow was kind of ideal for us because it set up a good base. So, so the trails are all in. There was a great group that went out this weekend, shoveled, got the connector trails in with Enchanted Forests and then behind the church there and got that connected. And so active regrooming is going on. John Gallup was out there today with the drag, trying to smooth things out. So, so I think we're off and running. And in, let's keep perspective here, it's still the first half of December. And it feels like February out there. And we've been saying that now for a month. So things are looking really great and we're off to a good start. Let's enjoy it while we got it. We're really asking people, when we get those warmups, not to go trench around on the trails. You just create post holes. And it was amazing the damage we saw after the last warmup. And people, some people just went the whole distance and I don't know what they're doing, but they must have been exhausted when they got home. And while they're out there, we ask that you can please pick up your poop. There's plenty of bags. There's plenty of garbage cans out there. You know, you can create a little bag that can hang off the dog and the dog can carry it back to the garbage for you. We just ask you to pick it up and bring it back. It just makes the area so much nicer for all of us. And then especially when we're grooming, we're not leaving brown streaks everywhere. So it really works out. Upcoming, there is a solstice celebration on the 21st, Thursday, the day the kids get out of school for break. So come over to the 5K and join your other skiers and, and there'll be a nice celebration right there. So that should be a lot of fun. It looks like weather will be great for it too, out there. We staff are keeping up with plowing walkway or excuse me, snowblowing the town square, keeping the bridge open, taking care of trash in the mudmids. So if you see anything that's full, we appreciate letting us know. Sometimes we fall behind on the trash collection. We are still looking for a volunteer if they want to help us with that. We had a great volunteer last year in Don Davis. He's unable to do it this year. But we would double up. If somebody wanted to help us out with that, that'd be great. Just one day, we could be huge for us. And then we've been really busy with trail grants. We applied for two major grants. In this last week, we've been doing a lot of follow-up. State Parks has been excellent to work with. They've been getting additional information to make our grant application stronger. So, and so our land water conservation grant, which is for the Pavilion and Lions Club Park, is right sort of right in front of us right now. And then our T P grant for the middle of Ditterod is out there too. So we just got noticed that they're going to be heard before the committees in January. So we're looking forward to that. And the trails plan, as mentioned, is coming up and will be introduced on the 9th of the assembly and then considered for approval on the 23rd. There will be a hearing on the 23rd. So if anybody would like to give public comment to the trails plan, we encourage you to come and do so at that meeting. Just pay attention to the agenda and you'll see when it appears there. As always, Margaret is a great job keeping our websites up to date and the different things going on out there. And then as we move into the year, we're going to start planning for all the new projects for '24 in the summer and getting our seasonal staff on board. Spring will be here before we know it, the way things are moving. So I guarantee it. And then moving into roads, it is full on winter out there. And the crew is doing, doing an excellent job keeping up with the, the snowfall that keeps coming. Repeated snowstorms followed with some rain and then some heavy sanding and then some more snow. They're doing a good job just keeping up with it. And it's been a real pleasure working with them. So, so we'll work with it. Today, we had a big day on Alberg. We widened out Alberg, got snow moved and got ready for the next, next month's snow. So things are working there and we really appreciate when people don't park on the streets. We've been actively ticking people in or tagging people in town square just to get their cars moved because snow piles get so large and it's hard for us to get the drainage spots and things like that. People seem to think it's just the storage lot down there. It's not. We have no problem with parking town square, but actively move your car so we can move snow around is our request in there, especially on streets around town. If you know the plows coming, please get out of the way, help your neighbors out, help us move snow and all those things. So. Major projects, we got a couple going on. We're looking at the fish culvert replacement for Davos. And so we're looking for Aliasko Creeks. We're starting to get going on that. Today, we had a meeting. We'll have another meeting tomorrow on our work towards getting the grant from the EPA for the Rouen culvert. So we'll be working with that. There's right now funding designated for 1.6 million for that new fish culvert on Rouen. And then so we'll be working out the match. So we'll keep you informed as we get through that process, the hardest part is getting that grant going. Overall, budgets are looking good. Roads budgets, just right where they're going to be. It's going to be a tight one. We have more expenses in the last three months than we normally have. As you can see, like November was up $20,000. I probably see the same thing for December. So we've had some jumps there. October was fairly quiet, so that might balance this out. But if we do go over, we'll be discussing it with you, but we're trying to keep it right now. We're at 90% of spent budget for the year. So we'll see what December does to us. And then parks, it's right there. Really the main cost for parks for us, we haven't been charged by the other government departments, the IGCs. So we'll start to see those come in here towards the end of the year, January. January, when we call the 13th month, we'll be closing out everything then. And then police and fire, for the most part, is looking pretty good there. Definitely a lot more expenses to be figured out as we get towards the end of the year. So, so overall, that's sort of what's going on with us. And one thing that we are requesting GBOS to consider is a shift to your meetings. You know, we usually always do the third Monday of the month, but the next two months that falls on holidays, I will be gone. Margaret will be coming back from a remote location. And we would prefer to move both meetings to the fourth Monday of the month. Just the way the calendar works out, they just fall early. But one is Martin Luther King Day, the other one's President's Day. So we'll have the board consider it. I think that's an agenda item tonight. So that's, that's our request for you guys. So I'll open up any questions you may have and take it from there.
Actually, before we open it up, two questions. I don't think it did make it on the agenda per se, but we were, in previous discussions today, the thought was that we could just talk about it among ourselves because it doesn't really fall into the new business, old business structure. It's just rescheduling a meeting. And so I was hoping to get a sense from the board, if anybody has any objections to following that suggestion of moving our next meetings. There is, one consideration is the assembly meeting, but if we move our meeting to the 22nd, we would still be coming in before the 23rd. So, which is the other, right. Anyway, so do we have any?
The problem we've had before, when we've had a meeting, an action on the meeting, the assembly, the day before the assembly meeting, is our resolutions don't make it to the assembly. They generally need at least a full day, maybe a couple of days before it makes it. So I would suggest if we are going to move our meeting to the 22nd of January, given several important things that are going to likely be discussed on the 23rd, we either move things tonight and/or consider a special meeting between now and the 22nd.
Okay. What if, what if we revisit this at the end and say, see what would you like to do? Or why don't, tell you what, actually, why don't we do this? If there are no specific objections, why don't we go ahead and, but if we have general consensus, and I'm happy to just go by consensus. If we have general consensus to move the meeting, let's do so and then decide at the end of this meeting if we need to have a special session for lingering business.
Okay. I think as mentioned earlier, when we did the agenda amendment, we may, we may need to move an item tonight as well. So we'll do that before the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So do we have any objections to moving the January and February meetings back one week? No? All right. I'm going to just go with that rather than, all right. Now, do we have any questions for Kyle?
I saw an idea that Rasmussen has new leadership and if you're aware of that, it says it's going to delay funding in that process.
We are actively talking with Rasmussen. And so that in relation to the Glacier Creek Suspension Bridge. We are actively talking with Rasmussen and so that in relation to the Glacier Creek Suspension Bridge is, is our thing. And, you know, and so a quick update on that, for those who aren't aware, you know, we're looking at building a suspension bridge to replace the hand tram. We are through the 35% design. Graciously, the board committed 500,000, if we can match 500,000. We're working with the Forest Service on that and we're also working with the Rasmussen on that. Before the leadership change, we had already started with the Rasmussen on this project. And so they are keeping it earmarked for us, they haven't closed the door on that. And we have a very large public supporter in the name of Chris Von Inhofe, who's really pushing this as well. So we actually met with him last week and, and so we're working our different angles there to. And I think Rasmussen is generally and genuinely interested in being part of this brick project. So, so we will continue to work with them. I do plan to meet with them in the new year and keep moving that forward. So there's sort of a lot of balls in motion right now, but we're closer than ever to having the funding we need to get that bridge going, so.
And there's one follow-up question about that. Was there, is there a match requirement and/or a funding expiration date for the CARES Act funding for that bridge?
No, we've put that money into motion, we're using it all for design, so it's in action now, so.
And it'll get used up in?
Yep, and we plan to use the remaining amount to finish, to get us to the 100% stamp design.
Okay. Do we have any further questions?
Not a question, but I have a comment. I just wanted to thank you for all the service with the roads and it's really excellent. It's like day after day. And last week, when Girdwood had more snow than Anchorage and Anchorage had just had a remote day, Girdwood had school. I thought, wow, maybe Girdwood won't have school and it was really impressive.
Yeah, I hope next time they call me before they make that announcement. Bit of a surprise to wake up and like, oh, we gotta get on it.
Wow.
Reputation.
All right, public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be not listed on the agenda. Do we have anybody online who would like to comment? Okay, Brian.
Thank you. Brian Burnett, Post Office Box 838 here in Girdwood. Last week at the Land Use Committee meeting, I took my public comment time to speak in support of the, of the move that Heritage Land Bank made with, in the partnership with Great Land Trust to transfer parkland to the community in Anchorage and the partnership that was formed with the local community, with GCI and the municipality of Anchorage and getting land to the community to use for recreational purposes. And, and the land, that area was, you know, unsuitable for development and really best suitable for recreational purposes. And I would like to put forward that we have land like that here in Girdwood and most specifically, I believe that the, the land north of the airport would fit this sort of criteria that HLB has established for getting land and, and working with Great Land Trust to create these community partnerships. Again, we have land that is not necessarily suitable for development and would be best suitable for recreational purposes. And I'm looking forward to moving something through Trails Committee when we start getting it on the agenda for the, the next meeting and, and working, seeing what we can do to work with Great Land Trust to, to get some, some land up there where we can build some trails for the community.
Brian, are you, excuse me, are you talking about parcel 6011 or north of that?
I'm talking about land north of the, I, I think, land north of the Department of Transportation property line there, moving up somewhere, moving up valley in between Glacier Creek and the CPG Cat Road, if you will.
I think some of that is 6011, which is on the working land.
Yeah.
In Losal too.
Yeah, it might be.
Okay, okay. Hugh, did you have a public comment as well?
Yeah, we all s, 2/4, 3/8 sack mine road. I have been a resident of Girdwood for about 11 years now. And so I wanted to announce to folks tonight that I am running for state legislature. I have filed my letter of intent. I don't believe anybody from Girdwood has held a legislative seat in as long as I can remember. And I am looking forward to walking around and knocking on all of your doors. So that's why I also wanted to warn you, so if you see some weird guy, don't freak out. I know not a lot of folks running for office come down and visit us. And I think that's kind of what's motivated me to be here. I have participated in numerous different community activities here in Girdwood and I too felt the stress of feeling I live in a community that goes unheard and unseen. And I would like to bring better representation of this community in South Anchorage. I'm a business owner, I run Midnight Sun Brewing Company in Anchorage. I'm also the trade president or the president for a trade association that represents all the breweries, wineries and distilleries in the state. So I've worked on legislation, I've worked on regulations. In fact, that's kind of why I'm doing this. I finally finished a three-year regulatory project that changes how alcohol is regulated in the state. And now I guess I'm looking for something new and fun to do. And I also hear good things about Eagle Crest. So I, I am highly concerned about educational funding in the state. I am highly concerned about energy and bolstering the, the environment for small business in the state. I think we've spent a lot of time focusing on resource development, but I think there's a lot of entrepreneurs here and I think there's a lot of small businesses. And I think the state needs to start doing better to foster the environment for more businesses to grow because I think we only have about 30 years of oil left and we need to start thinking about the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. May I ask, is that the seat currently held for Letty Shaw?
It is, Representative Shaw is actually not running again.
Thank you. All right, do we have any further questions or public comment? Crystal.
Hi, Crystal Hope. I just wanted to provide an update because this body did provide a letter of support for the Girdwood Workforce Childcare Project. And the press release was put out and so we are now allowed to share it publicly that our project was awarded 350,000 from the Rasmussen. So we're very excited about that and are getting so close to getting where we need to be for, you know, having our entire budget ready. And we will be putting out a local fundraising effort that you guys will be seeing out in the coming weeks and look forward to, you know, this new facility that will last our community, you know, 50 plus years. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. I actually have a quick public comment of my own as well. I just wanted to point everybody, as we are starting to discuss more on, on almost every agenda now, more things about housing and short-term rentals and long-term rentals and all kinds of things. I really want to encourage the community to look at the housing information matrix that was put together by the GHEC and so that's available online and it's pretty amazing. It's a deep dive into information and it is fascinating and everything from how many of our condos are actually lived in as full-time residences to the population loss within this, everything else, it's super fascinating. All right, if that is the end of public comment, I'm going to move on to old business. The first one being update on approved for community training on effective board meetings. As previously mentioned, that's scheduled for February 27th at 5:00 PM. I don't have a more in-depth update on everything that will and won't be talked about at that meeting because we, I wasn't able to schedule a meeting with that organizer until February. So I think this will be quick and that unless there are any questions about that, we can move on to item number seven. Do we have any? All right. GBOs Resolution of Support for Assembly Adoption of Girdwood Trails Plan, guy.
Since when, the trails plan has been through extensive input and public comment from the Trail Committee for over two years now, I think. And the plan has been developed and continued on by the community. It went in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission last month and a few Girdwood people were there to speak to it. And now this resolution is just to support that. Basically kind of highlight the process of the, how the plan was put together and support the plan that's going to be introduced on January 9th. Well, I believe Kyle and Hallie are going to be introducing, is that correct?
Correct, the presentation similar to what we did at Planning and Zoning.
Okay, and then on the 23rd, the assembly will vote on it. So this resolution is in support of the plan and then the process to it, what it's, what it's taken to get to this. For the board, for vote for resolution for support for this.
Well, second.
All right, do we have any discussion?
Well, thank you for your work on this guy. I read it and support it.
That's great.
Been a long while, a long, a long and interesting journey.
Hasn't it so? All right, if there's no further discussion and I see nothing online, I think we should do a roll call vote for this. And I'm not sure what's happening there.
Real quick, hey Andrea, your camera's on, just want to let you know.
So Kyle, would you be, run them both over?
Jennifer Wunegard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brandon Sullivan?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you, guys.
Can I make a move that we, because we've decided to move our meeting in January to the 22nd, it's likely that the, the cemetery bond will be introduced on the 9th and then up for a vote on the 23rd. So that will not give us time to provide a resolution to the assembly in favor of the cemetery bond. We did pass one about a year ago, but I think it would be beneficial to update that. So we had that on the agenda under new business and I'm suggesting that we could move that to old business and maybe act on it.
I would second that. 14?
I'm not seeing it under new business.
It was.
Oh, the amendments, right, 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 okay. All right, so we put it in under old business. Well, let's, or sorry, right, I'm 14 under old business then. All right.
Sure.
Let's do this by consent rather than, do we have any objection to moving that up there? All right, so.
I guess.
Done and done.
Not definitely, I mean, I'm concerned. I know we've been working on not fishing things up as quickly, but this has been in public eye for a long time, discussed, you know, over and over. So I feel totally fine moving this up to old business and discussing.
Yeah, I would agree that we're definitely, we definitely don't want to make a habit of this in general, but particularly, it's been discussed a similar amount of time as the Girdwood Trails Plan. It's been ample opportunity. Okay, so returning then to item number eight. This is where I have a potential conflict of interest, so I'm going to hand the chair over to, to Brianna. And what I'll disclose is that I am not involved in short-term rentals in Girdwood. I have no plans to be in the future, it was about five years ago, only at the behest of long-term renters who needed in or out of a lease early. Because I have furnished rentals, it was an easy thing to do. But at any rate, that hasn't been the case for over five years. The potential problem that comes into play with my, that I own a triplex in Anchorage to the, the, most of the revenue from that triplex comes from two long-term rentals. But a portion of it comes from summer STR rental.
Thank you, Jennifer, for your disclosure and thank you for also disclosing this. We had this topic at our December 7th meeting and what I ruled at that meeting was that Jennifer's participation would be in the Girdwood STR decision-making and action and you would be recused from the Anchorage, any decision-making or action. So I would continue that ruling and I don't need to, we don't need to reenact it. But if there's any other objections, now you can make an objection, anybody.
No objection, but I point out, we actually voted last time, so we've already made that.
Yeah, we voted already, so I don't, just reiterating the ruling. So for this item, if part, if number eight is the reading, the way it is right at the top, because I see it as like two parts kind of on number eight.
Correct.
So would I chair this top part?
Yes, please.
Actually recommend that we do the, that we do these two parts in the opposite order. I think it's important that we, we address what the needs are of Girdwood first before we answer the question of what do we do with the Anchorage proposal? Or with the existing proposal.
So, number eight is GBOs Action Regarding Assembly Proposition for Short-Term Rentals Permitting. And then if we reverse that, the order to help us clarify needs, the resolution draft addressing current specifications.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Of STR records.
Yeah, I'll start with this. In the last several meetings, I've mentioned in a spoken form, and I think it appears in the minutes as well as from our last special meeting, what I've heard pretty consistently is, is four, four principles or four goals of any short-term regulation, short-term rental regulation in Girdwood. I've sent a draft resolution to both you, Margaret and Kyle. If you can pull that up.
Sure.
That's what Brianna and I have been working on. This is a set of wherances and just a statement of those goals. Shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, it's basically, it's the same as we've been discussing for a while. So just another quick word relative to the, to the reason, the reason I suggest that we change the order here. I think it's important we establish what, what we need in Girdwood before we, before we then try and answer the question whether the proposal that was introduced in Anchorage meets that need or gets in the way of that need. I'd suggest we act on this first resolution first and then address the second one. Okay, so this is an attempt to state those goals in resolution form. First, first whereas identifies that approximately one and a half, approximately one and a half percent of the, according to commercially available numbers from, from the short-term rental market, approximately one and a half percent of the properties in Anchorage as a whole are involved in the short-term rental market. The second paragraph points out that in Girdwood itself, it's a pro, almost 20%. The paragraph just introduces that there is a resolution in front of the, an ordinance in front of the assembly which addresses a permitting process and impact on the immediate neighbors. The fourth one points out that the impact of short-term rentals in Girdwood is much greater than just the impact on the immediate houses surrounding, short-term rental. It's, it impacts the housing within the community. The next paragraph accepts that it's a, clearly performs an important economic activity within Girdwood, both direct and indirect. For example, there are plenty of people, businesses servicing short-term rentals. So it's not a, all short-term rentals is bad or all short-term rentals is good, it's a lot more subtle than that. The next one just points out again, we're in Anchorage. And the last one points out that clearly that there, there have been multiple studies that have shown that short-term rentals do have a negative impact on the broader housing market, so we're not alone. It's not an assumption. So there are two therefor's. The first one, which we can debate, whether we want to keep this in or not, this basically retrace a statement we've already made. So I don't think this is controversial. We've already said, we voted in the meeting, that the, that the proposal that has been put forward with this addresses some things which are important to Girdwood, but it. addresses some things which are important to Girdwood, but it misses many of the things that have most impact in Girdwood. And the second section, which hopefully you can scroll up, this, those goals that I think we've discussed multiple times before. So the first one is, this is the thing that the, the Anchorage does address partly. It addresses impacts on the immediate housing around a short term rental, so noise, you know, parking, those sorts of things. The second one is about the, the use of any excess fees or any fees in excess of administrative costs, and also any taxes from short term rentals, such as room taxes, that we can use that aren't subject to appropriations like charter or direction charter. The third one is pointing out that we want the, we want short term rentals to, we want this mechanism to provide incentive to bring back some long term rentals, or at least rebalance short term rentals, long term rental ratio. And the last one is to distinguish and differentiate between short term rentals that are used as part of somebody's primary housing, place they actually live and reside, versus those used in non occupied housing. So that's where we are. The Girdwood's can answer any questions on that?
Thank you, Mike. I would just add that I think this would be a good step, that we state our goals instead of saying what we don't like about the current AO, and then try to talk to the Assembly that way instead of a different group. So this helps, helps us in making our next steps as well as a community. So if we have any other thoughts or additions, these are, like Mike said, these are things we've already all talked about in goals he's mentioned several times, those four top ones that all heard at the meetings that have been talked about this.
Well, thank you both for your work on this. If we don't have any other comments from the board, I have some that I'd like to sit on for a moment. It's always hard to digest these resolutions when they kind of come in right under the wire. So I want to take a little moment with that. But in the meanwhile, Matt Schecter.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to state in, in light of the resolution that the, that the GHGC is, is right now looking into what a carve out might look like in terms of our own short term rental rules and incentives to convert short term rentals to long term rentals. Couple of us have been talking about it in the GHC and kind of bouncing around, and we've provided a, a document or some notes that will be put forth at the next GHGC meeting on the 27th for discussion with the community. And there's, there'll be quite a bit of detail in those notes. I also wanted to let, you know, GBOS know that I'm actually kind of neck deep in reviewing much of the short term rental data that we have in Girdwood. Jen kind of mentioned the matrix in terms of a lot of the data that we have about the community. I hope, prior to that meeting, I hope to be adding a lot more data in relation to what's going on with short term rentals in the community, so that the community can kind of absorb it. And perhaps we'll kind of see it in light of what we're talking about with short term rental regulation and incentives, and, and we can start to kind of, you know, hopefully kind of shape our own destiny possibly in light of, in light of these issues. Thank you very much. And I would just say, yeah, sorry, Jen, I just said I would expect to add that data to the matrix for people to kind of see publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I know it's turned into a part time job doing all that data collection.
Not, not a problem. You're very welcome.
Want to do off of my help, Matt, I've also been doing the same thing over the last several years. So if there's anything you want to share, any help you want with that, or you want to share any of my, my data analysis as well, I'm welcome to. We're welcome to collaborate.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
All right, Brett?
Yeah, right. So I think that my, my thought on this is, is good. I'm really glad to see this type of direction from GBOS if this were to be passed. I think that a lot of these wants are addressed in, so a lot of the detail that GHGC has been contemplating and, and I think that, I think some of that advice on STR regulation hopefully will be coming out of the body after our next meeting. It has matured quite a bit and, and then kind of outlines some of the detail needed to get to these policy goals. And I guess it delves more into the particulars and what our specific ask would be. So I look forward to the body producing that, and, and I think that what we've been working on reflects this set of policy goals that's in front of you. Thanks for the time.
All right, building on what Booth, Matt and Brett were tired about, I, I do have one concern about this, which I, I think that that final resolution is, is not actually a resolve of anything. It's, those are our goals, and, and I appreciate those being included. I know we already voted on those, so I, I do appreciate those being included, but, but it's not actually a resolution or a direct ask about this particular AO 2023-110. We do have an ask that we've been dancing around, and it, it ties into what Matt and Brett have talked about. Yeah, we have our own ideas around this, but we, I think the specific ask needs to be for a carve out. And whether or not we get it, whether or not, and I understand that there are issues about it, but I have talked to our Assembly, several of the Assembly members about it, not all of them, that's a trick. But I, I think that there, I think it's worth asking for, and I think that that will really facilitate giving us the space to design what we need. Designing what we need on top of what the municipality is doing, particularly if they are already taking, during the, first of all, during the permitting process a certain way, this flat fee permitting process, I think, does not suit Girdwood. And then to trying to get money out of the Assembly coffers once they go into the Assembly coffers, we've had enough experience with that, right? Like, we've been fighting about EMS funding for as long as I can remember, and the rate we're going, our grandchildren will be fighting about it. So it just feels like we, I would, I would like to see us formally consider asking for a carve out as a resolution. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I was kind of curious exactly what what this will produce when we, when we give it to the Assembly before they vote on it. I do see those last four bullets, more as, whereas, you know, statements. They're, they're your goals, you know, I agree with that, but, you know, whereas Girdwood sees the set of requirements as, you know, something to me, that kind of reads more as, it isn't, as Jennifer had mentioned, it, it isn't a direct ask, it's, they're my goals. So I kind of see it as that. Where in your mind, the authors to this, if it's presented to the Assembly, what action, in a perfect world, what would you say? Would they say, oh, great, well, we'll just pull you out of here? Or I mean, what kind of action would, would come from this document?
So I'll respond to both the last points. The, the purpose of this is to clearly state what the goals of any regulation should be, how it needs to, what way, what we need. There is a second step, which is somewhat distinct of having established what those goals are. What we then want to do is either AO 2023-110 S, or whatever it might be, or any other action. So there are two distinct steps. This is step one. We want to, I believe the, the goals is what we want absolutely do fit within a resolution, within a resolved statement. Because what we are saying is these are the things we, that need to be achieved by any future regulation. How we interact with the existing proposal is a slightly different topic. We're just acknowledging in the first therefore, what we've already said before, that the resolution, that as it stands, it doesn't meet the goals of, the important goals of Girdwood. And then the second, the second therefore goes into what explicitly says what the, what those goals are. We had this in two parts. One is to identify what Girdwood needs, and then the second part is given what Girdwood needs, if we agree as a body what Girdwood needs, then what do we do about the proposal that's in front of the Assembly now? I think that's a slightly different, slightly different consideration, and it's much easier to do if we've agreed what the goals are. Then we can argue whether, you know, 110 does or doesn't achieve the goals. It's clear it does achieve all the goals. Whether it gets in the way of us achieving our goals, and I think that's a, a very interesting discussion. My personal feeling is I, I think if we can, if we can agree on what the goals are now, we should have a special session. It sounds before January the 5th, maybe, to specifically address what we do or what we request in that work session, and how we present the needs of Girdwood within that work session. But I don't know that we can propose a meeting right now in the middle of this discussion. I'm just saying there are two, there are two distinct things here, and you both correctly have identified what needs to be done in the second. I think this first step necessary before we can get to step three.
I thought we already voted on, like, I thought this was already approved on essentially at our last meeting. So this feels to me like we're hashing what we already.
The, the first point was when we hadn't write it down, resolution point, the, the first thing about 2023-110 not being adequate, we did agree with, we just hadn't written it down as a resolution. The second for we have discussed, but we haven't put down in resolution form either. So this is a formalization of what.
Okay, right, but I, I understood as to approve the inclusion of these goals already. Like, we essentially already voted on understanding that this resolution was going to include these goals at the last meeting because we also talked about it at this, at the work session. But anyway, Brett, is that a legacy hand, or do you have a comment?
Oh, right. I was just gonna kind of reiterate if, if it would help the body that, you know, these, these goals are pretty much described in, in what we've been discussing with short term rentals in GHGC. But what's, what we're maturing is a response to GBOS that has more detail, and, and that would be something. If GHGC as a body can resolve this, that would be something GBOS could carry forward to the Assembly because it'll have very specific detailed asks that will help to drive to these enumerated end goals. Okay? So we'll tell you how to get there as we continue to deliberate that. Hopefully that action takes place in our next meeting to give you enough of a backup and informed, you know, sort of decision from the body as to, as to the things that GBOS could ask for in order to meet these goals. So that's the next step for GHGC.
Well, that raises an interesting point, but go ahead, Guy.
Yeah, well, I guess I am very interested in seeing how we reach these goals, you know? And you know, are we talking, I mean, you know, these can have very permanent, long reaching effects and, and you know, if we have a meeting on January 5th, and we get these goals that we've talked to, talked about in one meeting and then the next, or then they go there and then boom, here we are. I mean, is it going to happen that quickly? Are we worried about that? We haven't really, I mean, these are pretty lofty goals, in my opinion, and they can be reached, but not without some teeth behind them and things like that, which worries me a little.
My personal sense is it's unlikely that all of these will be implemented on 23rd of January. I don't think that, I don't think the Assembly is in a space where they want to in new policy goals for our community. I think they're interested in solving a general problem, a much smaller problem that is affecting Anchorage bold. What I, by clearly stating what we need out of it, I hope we can have an informed discussion about whether what they're proposing gets in the way and makes it harder for us to achieve our goals, or whether it can be adjusted in some way to help us achieve our goals, or whether we just have to, you know, take an entirely different approach. I think at the moment, it's, we haven't had, we haven't stated in a formal way what our goals are.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, because the ordinance, you know, from what I can understand, states the goals, but also gives the details, the mechanism to get there, right? By different rules or more, more money, right, by licensing and things like that. So, and likely that's what's going to happen. To review some of these goals, that will have to happen here, I would think, for sure. So I just, you know, I go there, I think there, I, I agree with the goals. I just, I kind of hope we don't have to figure out how to do it by January 5th, because I think the public needs some time to come up and weigh in GHGC's decisions. But I agree with the resolution, you know, I think the goals are, you know, I think they're good, and I think that's what we've discussed, you know.
Okay, yeah, did you?
Just real quick, it's kind of been stated, but the goals don't say how, they're just saying what we need. And so the timing is the critical part. Now, we as a body would like a special work session, or we feel comfortable with this in front of us, then it can be submitted to the Assembly before they have the S version, so that they could perhaps answer our question of, these are our goals, does it prohibit us? Does their AO prohibit us from reaching our goals? That if the other option and the other topic is like asking to be removed from that, which is probably not what our community would want.
You don't think our community would want to be removed from what?
STR regulations.
Oh, I, I think that we're talking about something different. But anyway, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I was gonna refine slightly what Brianna said, I've got a slightly different opinion. I think we, rather than present this and let the Assembly make decisions on our behalf, we present this as a statement that we've, we as a body agree on what our goals are, and that gives us grounding to then argue about whether the proposal gets in our way or helps us, hurts us, or can be ignored. That then gives us a grounding, which we can make that case, because we as a body agree, it's not individual, individual opinions, it's a, it's a body statement. So that's why this is a useful, this is a useful piece of resolution.
I agree.
So I'm wondering, I haven't seen a resolution that did what I'm going to suggest, but is it possible that you could add a line that says that this is something that the GBOS and the community are working forward on? And are seeking the Assembly's help once once a proposal is ready to be vetted or presented, I guess, not vetted? Like, maybe you can.
My sense is it's implicit, but if it's, if it needs to be stated additionally, I think.
Well, I think then you don't have to talk about carve out, because I don't think any of us really know how that happens. But anyway, it seems like some of the folks up there are feeling like something is missing. And perhaps you could say we're planning on following up with more.
All right, I have two hands up, I think. Matt, I saw your hand up first.
Yeah, well, I would say too is that I think, you know, as I'm going through the data in detail, literally, you know, STR by STR, you know, I'm starting to stratify, you know, how many of these are literally full flung businesses that bring in tens of thousands of dollars a year to, to themselves, you know, relative to, you know, smaller STRs that may only bring in a few thousand. How much are parsed between effectively being a full time business, 365 days a year compared to, you know, how many are, are partial and trying to, and hopefully through that data, we'll kind of be able to target. You know, if we're looking at things like incentives, like what's the, what's the population of STRs that we think will actually apply to incentives? So I think hopefully, if I can kind of get through a, a lot of this data, I can give, it'll hopefully give some direction to the community as where we think our policies can go. And then based on where those policies may go, how significant those policies differ from, you know, kind of AO 2023-110. That's just kind of how I'm kind of viewing my process. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Brett?
Right, thank you. Quick comment that, you know, I think that at, at least the way that this is written, it may address the number one topic on here, but the rest of these goals that we have as a community are not the reason that Anchorage put together STR regulations. They're not to meet Girdwood's end game. Uh, put together STR regulations. They're not to meet Girdwood's end game. And so that's why we're in conflict with um, where we want to be and where this ordinance is. So again, I want to reiterate, the carve-out comes in Title X changes, Title X Chapter Nine changes on the proposed ordinance. And then there'd be necessary Title Twenty-One, Chapter Nine changes uh, to describe use. Um, and those concepts, I, I think were somewhat well-received in discussion and. I think that's the detail that you're looking for, um, that will be, I, hopefully coming out of GHEC. It will be something that you can go in and say specifically, these are our goals. And these are the mechanisms that we want to employ to get there, because Girdwood's goals are different than. Anchorage municipality's goals. We have one in common, but outside of that, um, that's where it ends. So. I, ho- hopefully you can look forward to seeing that detail after our next GHEC committee meeting.
If I, uh, if I could build on the, I guess, Guy, what you were saying, I think, uh. I mean, that's, that ties in with what you were saying about the likelihood of us being ready to have everything all detailed out by January fifth. Even with a special work session or whatever is somewhere slim to none and. And that doesn't give us enough time to new business, old business, the whole thing, without running smack into the meeting right before the um, assembly. So uh, I do like the idea of letting uh, GHEC at this, and I, I personally like the idea of a work session on this. Although I'm not sure I can go, but I, I like the idea of that. Uh, I, I do think we need to consider. Actual action items on this and this uh. While some of us may be happy with that resolution. We, the assembly has already made it clear, especially the, the assembly, I mean, Randy has told us as a body that if he can't make this match. What Girdwood needs. So we have from the sponsors of the bill and some of us who've met with them privately, we have from the two sponsors of this, this AO. Sorry, not bill, but this AO, that they can't turn it into what we need. So I don't, I don't understand what. It seems to me like we're saying, oh, we, we have these lofty goals, but. I think it's gonna come down to us having to do it, and that's kind of what they're saying too. And so I would very much like us to consider. And both and GHEC and at the special works cut session, if this body agrees to it. To consider asking to be excluded from this so that we can form our own thing and collect the fees from that as, in the result. Um, I know that that is going to take a little bit of work, but I would hope that one option is that we could. Commit to a deadline, like we will, we will come up with our own thing. By accident, like in within three months or something, or whatever this body feels comfortable with after discussing it. But I think this kind of. I don't think the assembly is gonna look at our resolution and do anything with it that substantially affects their AO. Because they already told us they're, they can't make it work. So the, just the mindset we're working, and, and I don't think that that's, actually, I don't want to say mindset. I don't think that that's um, not wanting to work with us. I think they're recognizing the same thing we are from the other side. I, I don't feel like. Our needs aren't being heard, our needs just don't mesh with Anchorage's needs for this. But no, that would be my thought. Brett?
So can I respond to that?
Um, yeah, so hang on Brett, sorry, Mike has resolved.
Yeah, um, I mean, I agree that there's two, there's two different things here. One is a clear statement of what we want, which stands independent of whether. You know, if they decide never to do anything with the AO that's in front of us, this still stands. Um, so I think there are two things. One is make, that we need to make a clear statement of what we need ultimately. Um, and then the second thing, which is a separate thing, is make a decision on how um, that interacts with what the uh, assembly is currently proposing. Um, I think we can do this as two separate steps. If we try and combine them, there's a, there's a risk of it getting messy. And if we try and combine it with a specific proposed implementation, there's a good risk of it getting messy. So this is meant to be a kind of a statement of goals which is separate from the other things, does not preclude us doing the other things, but is separate. On that basis, I'd like to call it.
Are we terminating discussion on it at this point?
Well, this particular one, that's what it would do if people, if somebody decides to second that we voted favorite.
Like calling the question.
Calling the question, yes, sorry.
I'll second it.
Real quick.
Clarification, I'm sorry.
Who's chair?
I know, I.
It slipped.
It slipped over to Jennifer.
Okay.
She didn't interrupt, so.
Okay, so Jennifer's chair. Since we're talking about the Girdwood item.
Yeah, I think in this case, definitely.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure.
And so the motion that you're making is to approve the.
Well, first of all, I'm calling, I'm calling the questions, so we have to have a vote whether to stop any further discussion and have a vote on this.
Okay.
No, we believe we got a second.
Okay, shall we just go for roll call? Okay.
Two more voting on, in discussion.
Yeah, in discussion and just vote on this item, because I think we've been, we've been moving into other items.
And yes, is in discussion, yeah.
Yes, it's in discussion, move to a vote.
Okay, shall we go?
Sure.
Okay, Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero, three one.
So now we move to a vote on the resolution itself.
Uh, motion, yep. Uh, Jennifer Wingard?
No.
I'm, I don't know who seconded the motion on the resolution.
Oh.
Brianna did, didn't she?
I'm happy to, yes.
Okay.
She did.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, uh, start again, sorry. Jennifer?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Brianna?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Three one, motion passes.
And then I have one quick question about this. Do we also need a vote about whether or not we have a special session? Think we should make, uh, we should, I would consider if we could, consider making a motion for that.
Yeah, so uh, I, we don't normally do that, but we should do. Um, so I propose that we have a. We have a special meeting before the uh, the assembly holds their work session. Uh, on the fifth, so it'd have to be before January the fifth. The purpose of that would be to discuss. How we, given we've already made these statements, um, how we respond or recommend that uh, the. The A, the assembly ordinance applies to Girdwood or should be modified, so it's helpful to go.
I'll second. Session motion?
Uh, it says special meeting, not work session.
Special meeting.
So we can make a decision.
And I don't know if we need to, to roll call that, if do we have any disagreements with that or we all agree?
We have a date.
No, no.
We have a before, before Jennifer.
Okay, before.
We will most likely try to schedule it within the next two weeks before the first, because things get really busy after the holiday. Um, so let's probably get it done for New Year's. Yeah, I'll try to work with you on that later.
You are, Brianna is now chair.
Imaginary, you have to tackle the next item on number eight as we keep going. So thanks for the momentum. Uh, this is the resolution addressing MOA ordinance within the Anchorage Bowl. So what do, what does the body feel? Uh, after our last meeting, where we are with this?
I'm gonna make a motion that we uh, postpone this item and to, to the special meeting, which is to be scheduled fifth of January.
We have a second. We move this.
Chair over the section.
Another meeting. Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion or any discussion? Okay, hearing none, and we'll go by assent to move this item to the, or the special meeting. Okay, off to number nine. So Jennifer, back to you. For number nine.
GHCC recommendation for funding to be decided from the GHEC Capital Account Fund for feasibility study for gravel infill. And construction material exfil location in Girdwood.
I can give you an update on that. Um, we are now in um. Where I've turned that all over to the Pate Company, and we actually had meetings last week and they're asking questions and. Um, and so uh, uh, we are moving forward on that. Uh, one thing about the uh, infill exfil. We may uh, give you a proposal in a two-step process. Uh, one will be to do basically the majority of the work and the scope of work. Um, on the first step, and then the second step is that if we do want to move forward on a particular site that they develop. Then we will get into the details about who runs it, what the operation uh, hours, things like that. Um, so that we can narrow down, instead of trying to give that to each site, which can be really time-consuming. Um, we would probably look at that and then um, go to the next step. So you'll see that when the proposal comes out, but they're working that up. So most likely in January, um, we'll have something, and we're gonna try to get into the housing. And it can, economic committee first, um, and then uh, bring it on up to everybody for approval, if it, if it comes out of that committee, so.
Got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, when you, uh, is that going to be available before the, the housing committee's meeting next Wednesday, do you think?
Uh.
Just to clarify, sorry, first of all, I clarify, what you're saying is this will be a cost proposal from Bute.
Yes.
Right. Um, do you think that will be available before next Wednesday when they have that?
Maybe. I told you, if we don't have it by Friday uh, before the meeting, um. At, at least Monday, um, then we probably won't move forward with it in December, we'll push it to January.
Okay, um, my second question is, I was a little confused by uh, the second part of the uh, of the work. So um. My understanding is we are not gonna run this service area. In fact, I don't think we can run it as a service area, it's not a service area at all. So um. What we're talking about is doing a feasibility study for presumably a private company uh, to run a gravel extraction facility. And I'm confused as to what the, the second part presumably would be paid for. I mean, we're already doing pre-development for, for a private entity, effectively, go ahead with this. So the second part, when it comes to details of exactly how this private company wants to run it, we, we, surely we wouldn't be paying for that as well.
It wouldn't be like how they're gonna hire people, they're gonna hire and how many excavators they're gonna have. It's gonna be more focused on what the community wants for operations of a facility. So if we do have something and then we're like, well, if uh, if the community is supportive of this, they may only want it for three hours a day in April. To operate it. Um, and so showing that in that, that detail. Um, it is called out, I, I can pull up the scope if we need to, but um, it was discussed in there about having sort of a sense of what the operations would be like and how it would be. Because part of that would be how impactful it would be on the residential and the commercial districts. Um, and so um, digesting all that was important to, to the committee, so.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that was the focus of it.
So we do it by analogy, if this was a, instead of gravel extraction operation, if this was a proposal to. You know, build multifamily housing somewhere, let's say, I don't know, Spro Lane or something, that's the gunny sack. Uh, because Lee is in the audience. Um, if, if that was a proposal, then the pre-development work would be done by the developer, by the private company, and they would come forward to us as a community and. Get feedback from the community, be paying for their own contractors to do that. Um, and then if they come forward with a very specific proposal, they would again be engaging and paying their own money to go through the uh, the public engagement process. It seems here, we as taxpayers are subsidizing that, and that makes me a little uncomfortable. I see why. The first step may be something we want to do. I'm not sure about the second and subsequent. I'm just posing that as a question for us to think about.
Sure.
We don't have any actions.
You can strip it out of the proposal too, if you don't want them to do that.
Thanks.
I think the, really the, the, the meat of this uh, research is to find out, is there a viable resource for gravel in the valley?
And it could definitely, it can definitely be a valuable exercise that we do want, so I just, I'm just, I'm just drawing analogies to other. Development activities, and it seems a little different.
Sure. You know, there's a big demand for us for roads, so this is a very important aspect for. The uh, infrastructure of the service area as well.
Yep, yeah, we're definitely a customer.
Okay.
Yes.
Are we, uh, we're falling into conversation here. Uh, Guy, yes.
I know we'll get this in front of us with more detail, but that first, I guess, is one of your, of your study there, um. Are they going, is the company, are they gonna do geotech? Are they gonna go to store records?
It's gonna be geotech.
And um. Are you gonna incorporate the um, the permitting part, your corporate, interstate permits, looking into what that takes, DNR and all of that?
Yeah, I, I may actually do this, because it, it, that's all called out in the scope of work that we, that was approved, and so we are gonna go through all those steps. And we'll show that in the approval, in the proposal as well.
I guess one worry I have is to minimize um, impacts, you know, the state, I've seen it happen with other gravel pit. They would like one gravel pit instead of twenty small ones, and so sometimes they like to. Um, if you're gonna develop it, you're gonna develop it for the greater good and not just for your roads or somebody's. You know, low-cost housing. So it would be interesting to get some feedback from DNR, the state, and even the. The beds on this.
And that's the part of this whole thing, we might find quickly it's not feasible at all, but we've answered that, that question, scratched that itch, and so. Um, but we have to go through those steps to figure this out. Right now, it's all, who's got the best opinion?
Okay, thank you. Could I um, take Brett's comment to question?
Uh, y- yeah, great. I just wanted to maybe add a little bit of, um, uh, again, it'll go back to the committee to see if this is even feasible, but. Uh, just try to think about this as um, a facilitating enterprise. Um, such that smaller developers or those who might choose to invest in developing in Girdwood. Maybe single-family homes or a, a one-off owner builder. Um, would be more encouraged to move their money here to the valley and, and build more housing. If cost of materials was reduced. Um, this is not to put any one uh, contractor at an advantage. But it is to um, make materials available locally to reduce cost of land development. So um. It's, it would be more of a facilitating role of the service area, which is uh, documented as economic stability. Um, and that could fall within uh, the service area as perhaps a limited enterprise function. This is, this should not be at any additional cost to the taxpayer. This should be self-funded. Um, but it should facilitate um, smaller investors and private parties to uh. It, be able to afford to build and develop in Girdwood. That's the intent. So we'll see if there's a feasible location to do this as we describe operating parameters, but. Um, this is not meant to take taxpayer dollars and make one contractor profitable. That's entirely. Um, misinformation. We, we want to make sure that this is open and we have the community's thoughts on the impact. Uh, but it's intended to be limited, um, seasonal and very directed and, and scaled in its nature. So. Uh, that's the scope of it.
Okay, one, one point of order. I think this is, thank you, thank you for that, Brett. This is not an action item tonight. We are not, there's no action on this. And so this was meant as an update, so I would prefer that we don't rehash this right now. If there are further things that we want to, that. Need to be discussed about this, um, I think the GHEC is a great place to do that, but the, but. This was an update on a ball that's already in motion, since it's not a, an action item, I, I would prefer that we move on at this point.
I want to, let's just share some information, which is on a slightly related topic, but not directly related to this, just a. Piece of information that came up recently. Uh, there will, I know in the past, the gravel pit, the existing gravel pit. Uh, down by the uh, railway line has been discussed, and I know there is an application pending and about to appear. Uh, from DOT and the railway to use that area as um, a helipad for future avalanche mitigation tools. So that may well cease to be a, cease to be an option, or maybe there's more opportunity there, just something to, something to pay attention to.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I would like to move on to agenda item number ten. Speaking of updates, um. Let me go ahead and read this though. GGc recommendation that GBOS consider that land in the South Townside is designated for a soccer field. Repurposing the existing soccer field as a potential site for workforce housing. Uh, but I, unless I'm mistaken, Brett, I, I think that this is kind of temporarily. At least temporarily tabled, but can you speak to that? I don't know if we need a full description of this again.
Right, it's just been an exploration uh, to try to prioritize uh, potentially easily developable lots. Uh, this one would have to go up to a vote um, to the municipality, um, although. That doesn't preclude this from having. That doesn't preclude this from happening. It might be too challenging. So. I'm sure the discussion will move on to priorities two and three. As far as desirable lots to develop on. So more to follow, but there are no action at this time. I think that it will be a presentation of. A couple of different options in order to move ahead with a developable piece of public land.
Okay, thank you. It sounds to me like the current public or the public public process up to this point has. Exposed that it's more complicated than it originally appeared, but I understand that it can still be on the table and it would potentially still be discussed by G H E C. But since it's not an action item and since we don't have a recommendation from G H E C on this at this point, I don't think there's anything we need to do with this here tonight.
I'd like to propose that we've we have looked at this. We've determined, we know that it's the parcel under consideration is dedicated to park. The it's an extremely high hurdle to turn that into something else. I don't think we should waste any more time on this. So I'd like to propose we. We postpone this item indefinitely.
I have some doubts about doing that when I view that as something that should come from G H E C.
I think we as body can make that decision.
I don't see any reason to.
Right, so you don't have to second it. Anyone else wishes to.
I'm fine with stacking it for further discussion or just this comes up as a separate title on it.
So that would be a different. It'd be a different parcel. So what we're saying, what we're basically saying is we don't think as a body, we should explore. That the soccer, trying to turn the soccer field into housing.
Saying that?
That's what I'm that's what I'm suggesting we as a body decide.
Okay, so where are we at on this?
I don't think we have a second. Do we have a second?
No, that's what we did. Did you all second?
My second was kind of conditional, but I said it for for further discussion. I would second, but there's also the opportunity to table it. But he made a.
So it's just whether to table it forever or temporarily.
I don't know if these be table definitely right now. I think. You know, these guys are working hard and that is. I mean. The barrier to housing and portable housing is land and utilities and that is land and utilities. Whether that, you know, it has some high hurdles and also I don't live over there. So but those are going to be high hurdles too. I live right next door. That probably gets excited about it. But that's with everything. But. It. It is, yeah, I don't know. It is land and there's that utilities and it's, you know, they've pointed that out. So I would. Push them away. I wouldn't push them away from keeping it on their list and making inquiries and, you know, it doesn't need to fill their list.
I have one more discussion. Yes, just quickly, I know that everyone would like to move the meeting along too. So. And I haven't heard a whole lot of community feedback because this item isn't really being heard by community members, but. Members I have heard from are very much opposed, but I'm happy to amend the motion to be table in this item. If I can amend that.
Doesn't it seem like.
Basically, it's do we want to keep this on the list when we know it's basically infeasible? And there are better options? Or do we want to keep coming back to it? And and discussing something that. London, we're never going to do. It seems like a waste of time, but I'm happy if people want to keep it on the list. That's fine.
Right. In fairness, I don't think that we return to this unless the G H E C finds a reason to bring it back. But let me have the chair of one of the co chairs of G H speaks speak to that if that's what you would like to say, Matt, or.
Yeah, I mean, whether whether G V O S decides they want to bring it up in the next meeting or they're not is their own business. But I think that basically just kick the whole idea to the curb is not prudent, simply because even if we're looking at other parcels of land. Whether it's H L B property, I don't know how high a hill it is to climb to get those parcels into the community for workforce housing. So I wouldn't discard anything. It's just a question of understanding. The relative difficulty of getting property or one parcel relative to another parcel. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So in the interest of moving along, since again, this is not an action item, I think we should vote on the motion that we have. Do a roll call vote and then.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Mike Ketchington?
Yes.
Brianna Solomon?
No.
Guy Wade? Motion fails.
All right. Item number eleven. Agenda item L U C two, three, one, one dash zero six. Review and consider assembly area wide bond proposals for public restrooms in Anchorage. I think this is another one that is currently kicked to the curb, but again, let me just double check with. The G H E C group, but it sounds to be like, and I think also from the conversations I've heard at L U C and not just out of G H E C, but also L U C. More information has come up about this and basically it's not the right for a number of reasons. There's. Not much for us to decide about this right now and it's still it's still an item that's developing and would depend on K with a. Much public support would depend on some kismet with the. Our B park idea and it's it's I think we're doing. I think this is too soon to deal with, but if anyone disagrees with me or really wants to talk about this, we can.
What's the information? I believe this came from L U C directly. I don't I don't recall hearing this is coming from a G H E C.
Correct. Well, actually it was initiated. Oh, that's a good question. I don't know. It was initiated by a G H E C member, but. Anyway. I don't see any reason to. Uh, Crystal.
So I wasn't the G H E C member that per that suggested this be on the agenda, but I do think. This is something that we should maybe just wrap our heads around a little bit more because. If this were to occur, like let's say the bond passes. Ideally, we would get a bathroom or two in Girdwood since we are part of the area wide. Can can somebody can can somebody correct me if I am correct on that or not correct? If if and then and then I have a secondary question after that.
Correct.
Correct. And Crystal, I thought though that in order to dive into this, we needed that thing to pass first and that a number of our assembly members viewed it as unlikely. So us hashing this all out with something that's probably not going to pass anyway, or at any rate prior to. It being official is it's a little bit curt before the horse.
Okay, all right. And then just sorry, but a secondary question would be if it were to pass the. The land which it would be eligible for would need to be. It basically H L B property because if anything is held under Girdwood Parks and Rec, it would not be eligible.
And is that wait, Kyle, did you? Okay.
I mean, you just municipal land. So it can be put on anything. The facility itself will not be a Parks and Rec responsibility. It should be funded. The way I understand it's going to it's going to have funding that comes with it every year that the general fund or the area wide will will fund. So it can be put on any municipal owned land.
Okay, and Crystal, did you have any more to add?
Well, so with municipal land include Girdwood Parks and Rec parcels.
Yes, that's municipal land.
Okay, so I thought that in the last G H A C meeting, we said if it was Girdwood Parks and Rec land, it would not be eligible. So I just want to make sure that that was incorrect and Girdwood Parks and Rec's land would be eligible.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, if we have nothing else on this, I'd like to move on. Okay.
Can we just say, you know, we're not going to touch this. We're not going to have this discussion until after the.
Yes, please.
So may then.
Margaret, if you wouldn't mind if you could make this go away for a while. Item twelve, discuss Girdwood and G B O S collaboration with H L B regarding the Girdwood Industrial Park.
So we have that on there because your last meeting with them, which was the quarterly meeting. They there was sort of a motion that came out of it, or at least a directive that we would have more collaboration directly with H L B on the Girdwood Industrial Park. So we suggest that after the new year, we really push forward with that. And and continue to work with them. Because summertime, if they're going to do any sort of improvements or anything, summertime is going to be it. So we want to kind of keep that keep that on there. So working with those folks individually and maybe to think about is assigning a person out of the G B O S. To maybe work directly with staff and work directly H L B staff to get that going.
Okay, well, I would be happy to do that if the board feels that that fits in with land use. But I'd be happy to do that. We've been, oh, it would be great to see some movement on that.
Also be happy to do that if we see this as falling within economic development.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do it. Yeah, we have two people.
Yeah, okay. All right. Is there anything else on that? I don't know. We can move forward. Uh, yes.
Yeah.
That's two.
Yeah, Jennifer, could, is there any or Kyle, anything specific there about what that collaboration would look like? What would the success look like to you?
Well, I think really what we want to get from G from H L B is establish some goals of what they can get done. And then set a timeline for getting those items done. We can have some benchmarks that would really work for those leaseholders down there and 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 getting that going forward. So it's like we've had a lot of discussion about it. But we haven't really seen anything. And if anything, we could start monthly or quarterly. Meetings just about the industrial park with H L B staff to find out what progress is being made. I think that'd be really good to report back to the commission. You know, and then providing them help, you know, because I realize that they're just two land officers there trying to get things done and then trying to help move things along for them. As what we can do.
All right. So if there's nothing else on that, I'd like to move on to item number thirteen, park and ride lot homeless encampment. Kyle, this is you again.
Yeah, I really don't have much of an update here. I'm getting really not much direction from the administration. You know, we're we our biggest frustration is the snow removal concerned about. Garbage and things like that. The cars we did tow out of there recently, there was a lot of garbage that was left behind. That takes up staff time cleaning that up. Worried about human waste, things like that, but we're, you know, we're paying extra to leave a outhouse in town square. So there's just things that we're working through to make this all work. And so. You know, I wish and I have very frustrated people call me about it and I just tell them I really can't how much I can do. You know, we've been able to move cars with the tagging process, which has helped to open up like we talked about for operations and. And we had some derelict cars in there that did go away. That, you know, were full of trash. And so we're trying to keep that area clean. We're just hoping that people who have decided to live in these areas are helping to keep those areas clean as well. Hope we're not going to find a big mess come spring. So that's where we're at at this point in time.
Of course. Do you have? I know it was part of part of that area was being used for snow removal. Do you offer snow storage? Do you have the space you need or is that still restricted?
Well, we're quickly filling in. So we're gonna we're gonna be.
Forty three percent.
Yeah, we are our our snow storage at the corner of Hungram and Girdwood Place, you know, it's it's filling. Those guys are doing a good job of ramping it. But if we continue like this into March, you know, a lot of times our busiest months, our biggest snowfalls are February and March. We we could have issue. We might need that area. So the park and ride has always been a reserve and we've used it many years to fill in with snow. To keep town square open and moving. So so we will and it gets very limited in there because we have drainage issue in the corner. We got like all that water from Girdwood or from Hungram drain into the park and ride and to make its way all the way out to California Creek. So it gets kind of complicated there in that aspect. So. But yeah.
Kyle, is there anything we can do? As a body or a board or independently? To communicate to the municipality?
Well, I think the biggest thing in municipality just does not have a policy and procedures on how to deal with this and we're missing. So.
You've said that for.
The administration has not come out with a policy and procedures and you see it throughout town. They have same issues. So. But we just don't, we don't have any clear direction. I call them and I try to get a whole legal department and there's only half of what should be for lawyers and legal department right now. And so and I respect when they get back to me, but it could take weeks before they get back to me on anything because. They're trying to tackle so much other stuff at one time. So they they try to work a normal life and try to keep up with it. So.
Just to, sorry, could I just clarify, were you, are you, are you talking about, is this about mitigation of the camping? Is that why you're contacting legal? Has that been the primary issues around the legal questions or is it banned?
Yeah.
Park. Okay.
Because, you know, I get a lot of questions from the community about what we're doing about what they see as perceived problem. And so we look into what operationally we can do and then present it back to the community and. And, you know, and I've been clear that we can't really do much. So. So we want to be transparent with the community about what we're trying to figure out and make things move that way. So.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on this?
I was just wondering if we do have an assembly member, I believe, still on the. Still on the. Online. I wondered if. Randy had any any comments or perhaps any suggestions here?
Mike, this is. Go ahead and turn to the S G R.
No, no, sorry. This is this is with respect to camping. So we have a problem with. A number of people in the community who are unhoused camping in one of the areas we want, we need to use the stoops for snow storage. And it's very difficult to get response from legal department to to sort of give us a process for how we could could go about this. Go about mitigation.
Yeah, the typical process would be for parks or A P D or whoever the the body is to, you know, make the post. Giving them fifteen days at the end of the day, fifteen days, they can legally go in there and then abate. The camp. So if you reached out, have you reached out to parks or A P D?
Yeah. The problem we have is you people living in in units, we can't touch.
Right, because because there isn't some space elsewhere.
Yes.
Or else to put them.
Yep. So we just have to work with restrictions we have.
So to some extent, the what's being discussed later on in the meeting is an attempt to try and help with this situation. So. Maybe we can, we can continue discussion then.
Okay.
Sorry, not much help on that. Thanks.
That's fine. I mean, these are these are residents of the community. And we have a housing problem. So this is a rational response to it.
It's, you know, we're trying to tackle two problems at once. It's a difficult situation.
All right. Moving on, we're in new business and I would just like to do a parliamentary check here. Yes.
Just before that, Chair, could we do number fourteen cemetery session and then maybe and do that quickly and then maybe take recess.
Sure, sure. That's right. I'm sorry. I didn't write down the, yes, cemetery. Yes.
Start over.
Sure.
Um, and we are going to hold a special session before. The new year. I know Tommy's been working on this as written up. Budget and profit and I haven't heard anything definitive about it. Should we give it some more time and talk about it during our special session or why did you want to?
I think either we could definitely do that. I we could keep the focus of that special session on short term rentals. And I think we we already had a resolution from a year ago and I think we can do a couple of small edits to that to to bring it up to date. And then pass that fairly quickly.
And get it and have time to get it. Okay.
Yeah. Brianna's already done the work on this to to update the language. So.
And because it's now a year, twelve, thirteen months past, we could change the dates and just sign it again. So that we're still encouraging it because Margaret made the point to me when I asked her about it. Because this item has been. Because I used to be the cemetery supervisor, I've been watching and it has not been on the assembly agenda. So. Tommy and I have been asking council and our representatives, where is it? And for example, in November, the director of Parks and Recreation was talking about the English Memorial Park and they have twelve, less than twelve. Public burial plots available. That's it. And the assembly representative said, so we need to do something about this. So. Mr. Gates, council said, we're hoping for January ninth to get the cemetery up, but they're concerned about the price. So the price may change. So resolution as we have it from the end of twenty twenty two is great. We could change the dates or add a few more edits to it. And I've made those suggestions, but like I said, Margaret said that's. Could call that extra busy work and make all those edits to make it fresh and new or just stay what we've already stated. Because I don't know what council has come up with for the million number. It's changing from eight to nine according to Tommy. Instead of eleven million. I hope that was some sense, made sense to people. Mike?
Jeffrey, sorry.
Jeff. Jennifer?
It's fine.
The, the other thing with the timing is that we will not have, we're going to have this meeting before the fifth. And we will not have the introduction of, um, the resolution or the introduction of the bond ordinance until the ninth. So we probably won't know what the final number is even on, in our special item.
Right.
I think, I think we expect it to be nine million. So I would, I would suggest, and I'll be a concrete suggestion, I would suggest that we take the last, um, we take the last resolution. Um, and make three changes. The changes would be we update the last whereas to say nine million dollars instead of five. We delete the penultimate whereas and we change from end where, um, to just say that, you know. Sorry, I'll wait to, wait to catch up. Twenty twenty-two twelve, I think it was.
Twenty-two twelve.
Yes, this isn't in the meeting. So, good day.
Good. Well.
I think it's twenty.
Twenty.
Sorry.
Okay, here we go. It's pulling up for reference here.
Great. So if you go to the end of this page, um, at the end of the previous page. The penultimate whereas on that page, we could, we can update that to say the parks director, uh, Director of Parks stated that there is less than, there is capacity for less than one year's worth of burial at the Anchorage Memorial Park. Um, the next paragraph, I think we can leave as is, the next paragraph that first whereas on page two, we could delete. And last whereas we just changed five million to nine mil.
And, uh, that five million right now, if I may interject, is making a statement to the Gerwood Cemetery. So I would add the nine to the end.
Yes.
Say, and estimated cost add, add an estimated cost of nine.
Okay.
After those three locations.
Yes, just to finish off, so the phrase in there would be to change, instead of saying Gerwood at an estimated cost of five million, we keep the word Gerwood, put a comma, then a cemetery in Eagle River for elevations and improvements to the Anchorage Memorial Park, comma, at an estimated cost of nine million.
Okay.
Nine million to the end.
Sure.
And then that plus change the date.
Change the date.
Okay, twenty twenty-four.
I just personally, since this was not, this was, isn't in the packet and we introduce this the way it is. And we don't have a, a time rush that if we do do an, uh, a special session, this isn't going to be in. You know, my, my personal opinion would be, can we just include this like maybe at the beginning of the agenda? So it doesn't get sidelined and then just bust it out in the four minutes. But that way we all have time to just take a look at it and read it and.
That makes sense. Okay, it's a relatively minor change. I agree. We might as well. We can make that change in the pocket.
That would be helpful if we make those changes and then, um, let's do that or, or if, I don't think.
Yeah.
Because that's supposed to be clerical. I don't think we need, unless somebody disagrees.
Thank you for your time on that. That probably was the length of the discussion.
Okay, great. So just some edits.
Up team.
And just for clarity, uh, we'll just limit the next special meeting to two items. Okay, good.
All right. We're now at the end and it just, I think it's taking a very brief recess here, meet back. It, uh, I'm not sure what clock is running.
What night?
Twenty past is seven minutes.
Six.
Six, okay. All right. We can do it. We can do it. Yeah, let's be quick. I know none of us want this to go late, but it, we're already two hours into this. Yeah. Certain mistake.
I think, um, you need to start snow blowing. I know.
I don't know.
How it's going.
Gravity is tight.
Wondering how it's going is.
Back here. Flowing public again.
You win.
I'm your, I'm your watchdog.
I feel like you need, like you need a medal or a badge or something, you know, like the red lantern. Kind of like that.
It's a bit of a habit.
All right. Welcome back, back to the Gerwood Board of Supervisors meeting. Uh, congratulations to all of you remaining online and actually listening, um, and not having fallen asleep. And congratulations to Brian Burnett for still being in the room. All right. Item number fourteen, G B O S appointment of new members to the P S A C board.
Uh, so we have, uh, been notified that we have two openings at least on the P S A C board. And we've received one application. Um, and so we're still accepting others. So if anybody would like to serve on the Public Safety Advisory Committee Board or Committee, um, they can submit their resume to us. Um, and then we'll present them to G B O S next month for your consideration to make appointments to the committee. So, so we're just putting that out there and that'll be all business. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else on that? All right. Item number fifteen, discuss agenda for M O A G B O S quarterly meeting, four P M on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-three in Anchorage.
So that meeting is on our horizon and, um, uh, we just wanted to see if anybody had any agenda items for now. I think I can pull up what the agenda items were last month.
Page one oh four.
Page one oh four.
I think they're October.
Yeah. I'd like to test our, the item we just talked about with files having issues with, for the municipality or policies and procedures, so whoever, not legal, but maybe whoever's, whichever stack be invited to that.
Yeah.
So to clarify, you're saying like homeless abatement?
Yeah. And then, because it's kind of the domino of the snow removal, but it's homeless abatement. Just base.
I would like to see item number one stay on the agenda, just on the off chance we ever actually get in. Um, and I think that item number two, I would also like to see that stay on the agenda.
We're going to be probably in the middle of probably comment on the, on the work plan.
Yes, uh, but we will have, uh, I'm following up on this idea around the industrial park. Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay. Well, this is new business, so we'll keep this on here and you guys can confirm next month.
Okay.
Yeah, would you bring up an idea of your quarterly or monthly meetings to work session with H L B? Could you bring that up at that meeting to get the, about the industrial park?
Yeah.
Maybe to get some more volume there.
There could possibly be, uh, a scheduling conflict with the twenty, what's that date right now? The twenty-second, it may get pushed back a week. So we don't know yet, but we will work that out with you.
That would get interesting anyway, since if it's, that's in Anchorage and we have moved our meeting to the twenty-second.
Yeah, so that's far, that's freezing.
Well, I mean, this is at four and is done by five.
All right.
And your meeting is at seven. So, I mean, we're good. We've done it. We got. I, I thought about that when I made the recommendation to move forward. I also have not had, um, confirmation from the muni about the availability.
Okay, so it might be a moot point anyway. Okay, okay, right. Someone, so we have, um, uh, Aisha.
I just have a quick question. The area that was gutted right by the police station, what, are you guys ever use that area for extra snow as well? Or is that planned for something else during winter?
That's private land.
The land that's, the one that was just gutted by, next door to the police station, not where the police parked, but right next door to it?
Right, that's private ownership.
Okay.
Thank you for your question. All right, um, moving on, on this agenda, do we don't, I don't think we have anything else on this for now, since it's new business.
The agenda, uh, is there any bond things going on at that point?
That, that's the day before is the.
Right, so we just take that off.
Apparently it's the day before the voting on the bonds. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that the, the item from last time is really about, um, the difficulty of, it was related to our budget. But, you know, we have to save money rather than use bonds.
And this, we all were here, but only H L B came to this meeting in, in October. So that's, that's what we're looking at, the old, old. Okay, thanks, Kyle. Go ahead, Jennifer, sorry.
No, no. Uh, Nibiz is under item number sixteen, agenda item L U C two, three, one, two, dash, zero, five, temporary workforce housing proposal. I want to, uh, take a quick pause on this before we really dive into all the particulars. And, uh, please indulge me, but I, I really appreciate, uh, board discussion about the importance of talking about this before G H E C has seen it. And when L U C didn't have it in the, uh, packet or much warning, I just, I wonder if it is absolutely necessary that we have it now or if we could have it as new business at the next meeting and kind of follow the process a little more. And in line of that, um, I understand frustration. I understand us wanting to move this. But I, uh, I, I understand from the co-chairs of G H E C, you're still online, that they're willing to consider moving January's meeting forward so that they could get January's meeting done before our, um, our next G boss meeting. Especially because we've moved ours back at Create Room so that they could, they could have their two meetings prior to our next meeting. And then that would kind of put us back in sync with a, a public process. Um, but also it would give, uh, the people who have been putting so much time and energy into our housing issues here to take a look at a proposal that definitely affects, uh, housing. So they're trying to, to, to meet us halfway here. The board would be willing to accept that.
So it sounds like they're going to have two meetings between, uh, this meeting we have today and our next meeting.
Correct.
Like, yeah, so I think that's, if we keep this as a new business now and discuss as much as we need to, uh, new business. And that still ties in, um, uh, addressing this and potentially voting on it at the next January meeting. I think that still works.
New business tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
Oh, I see. And then, and then not, right.
Because we'll have the same opportunity of two meetings.
Right, right. Let me double check where. Let me double check with the G H E C guys on this one. Does this mesh for you? Because I, I don't want it to take over. I know you've got a very full agenda, that, that was the one issue you guys had, because you've got a full agenda for your next meeting. And so my understanding is that the hope was to put this on this second meeting in, or your meeting in January. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I, I think that we're absolutely willing to work out our meeting schedule. It's, doesn't have to be the last Wednesday of the month. And I think if, if it would be conducive to business for G boss, we're absolutely in support of that. So, uh, yeah, this is just, we haven't had an opportunity to see this. I know that one of the committee members is the largest commercial landowner in the valley and he hadn't had a chance to see this. So I think there's a lot of discussion to be had and there are far more questions than answers. And in fact, I think that a lot of what the G H E C has been working on solves the, some of the need. And so I think incorporating this into discussion and how we can most effectively move ahead with solutions, it's important to involve the, the seven folks that are quite capable of, you know, discussing this in detail. I think it goes down into the weeds here a little prematurely. I think we're going to be able to answer some of these concerns with other mechanisms and/or combinations of actions. And so although I appreciate the detail, I think that there's a, a lot of ground to cover to work out a proposal like this into the grand scheme of things.
And I'm remembering my concern about this. So it gets us a little campy, cattywampus with L U C. That's, that was my concern about this, is because even if, even if we can get this through G H E C, then it has, then it has L U C meeting and making, because it was old business there, they end up making their decision before G H E C does, because of the way this kind of got pushed forward so quickly. So I, I just feel like process wise, we're half above all of plum.
So I don't know what the proposal is from a press group about when they want to meet, but I mean, there's nothing to stop them from meeting before L U C is there. Especially if L U C has been pushed back another week. If L U C is week three.
L U C is still the A.
Yeah, L U C is still the A. And so that would be, that gets off awkward.
So again, the, I mean, both L U C and, both L U C, you know, L U C is obviously a semi-independent and, and the, the Housing and Economic Development Committee is a subcommittee of us that's advisory to us. So I'd like both of them to see it. I don't think it matters which ones first. I'm not sure why this, I don't think there needs to be a concern about which ones first, they're operating in parallel. So I don't, I personally, I don't see a problem. I do see this as an urgent problem that we need to address. And originally, actually, the G H E C was set up to look at exactly this issue of temporary housing. I'm not aware they actually have yet. But so this is a, you know, the urgency is there. We have a problem today. We have a problem next week, we have a problem next month.
Okay, thank you. What, how about you?
I haven't finished yet, I don't think the chair's job is to, is to.
Well, I was hoping you could fully introduce it.
So, yeah, so I was going to say, so I think we've given, given that discussion, I think we can just go ahead and do it directly.
Okay. Just to clarify, I, I believe L U C, this was new business, so they'll be able to weigh in and make a vote on it before we meet again. And then G H E C will be two times available to make a vote as well, so.
Right. G, G H E C has been trying very hard to kind of work through L U C and involve as many people as, and as much of the community as possible and to take advantage of L U C's role as a community council. I think it helps to have an informed body, because since obviously L U C and its voters are completely dependent on who shows up that day. I do see value in having the recommendations of our, of our housing committee bring, be a part of any housing proposal that comes to L U C. So anyway, Matt, did you have a comment on this?
Yeah, I would like to, in terms of scheduling, I would like to see essentially the, the next G H E C meetings focus on the short-term rental, rentals, then followed by the G boss special meeting on short-term rentals. That way we have the ability to present the data that I've been reviewing and working on, as well as proposals that, you know, we're going to bring forth to the committee. And then the G boss can have their special meeting and then we can have a second G H E C to me, C meeting to discuss the temporary workforce housing proposal. And then go to the L U C meeting and then G boss. And then that kind of gets us in sync. That's how I kind of would see the, the order of things.
Right. And Matt, I, I would agree, but the issue is that the next L U C meeting comes prior to your second G H E C meeting, so.
No, no, understood, no, understood. So we would definitely move that, we can definitely move it up. Like again, I don't have an issue with doing it.
Right. So anyway, the, the way, the way this is currently pushed through and, and what I wanted to have a discussion about is, you know, whether or not this absolutely has to be done now and can't wait even 30 days. And, and I guess I should go ahead and mention that I've had a couple of community members come to me with wondering why zone changes have not been okay and have had, they've had members of GBOS say, oh, no, no, we can't touch any zoning, anything until we're done with the comprehensive plan. And now all of a sudden, we have something that's coming through like right before we've got our draft plan from Imagine Girdwood. Like the, where that's estimated to be in February. So I just feel like if we could wait 30 days on this, we could honor the public process and the incredible work being done by both G H E C and use L U C to its largest advantage and honor the work being done by Imagine Girdwood. Because if some of those maps show significant expansion of commercial zones, and I think that should be part of this discussion, because this is discussions talking about what we're going to allow in our commercial zones, it just again feels cart before the horse here. And so that's, that's the discussion I wanted to have before we dive into this, because this is a huge thing. This is a huge thing. The more I talk to people who were kind of waking up to this happening, the more issues and questions and concerns about this that came up. I don't like to see this being fast-tracked unless, yeah, I don't, I, I don't like seeing this fast-tracked at all. I'm not going to add the unless. I think, I think this is too big, too complicated and should, and as I said, it should honor the democratic process that we have set up. And in particular, it should give G H E C a chance to look at this before it's being voted on and have their recommendation prior to a vote from L U C.
So we're introducing it tonight. We can make a decision at a future meeting whether we perform action or not, as can other bodies. I don't think we're, typically we haven't, demand that body, other bodies take action at particular times. We kind of let the natural flow of things occur. So I don't think there's any reason to not go through this introduction process and introduce it tonight.
Well, I hear that and I'm just saying, I very clearly, and I hope I'm being clear enough about it. I do have an issue with it being presented tonight. I think that this is rushed through. I think that putting something in front of L U C without it even being in the meeting packet or on the agenda is too big of a rush for something this gigantic. This has the potential to turn as you, the, to turn Girdwood into the kind of butt end of R Vs as you come into town because of the potential expansion of commercial areas being proposed. Now, I don't think those are going to pass, but the current Imagine Girdwood, Matt.
Sounds like we're in the middle of discussion now. So should we just simply start the discussion properly, rather than, rather than argue on one hand, we're not going to discuss it at all, on the other hand, actually discuss the matter itself?
Oh, I, I hope, let me be very clear. I, what I'm just talking about is not your proposal. But whether or not this is the way for it to go through, I feel that it is being fast-tracked and that is, I want, is what I want to discuss, because I feel it is being inappropriately fast-tracked.
The decision truly is when we actually act on it, not when we introduce it. So it's been introduced anyway.
Yes.
So this item is on the agenda, which was approved at the outset of the meeting. So I think the way that you would remove it from the agenda would be through a motion. And since it's already on the agenda, you would need whatever it is, two thirds majority or whatever it is, which we can check on. So I, I think that that is where you are. So as the chair, you're not able to make that motion. Somebody would need to make that motion and then there would need to be a second.
Right. So just to clarify, what I'm interested in is whether or not we could consider tabling this until our next meeting and have it be new business at our next meeting. Yes, go ahead.
Just, I guess, like, uh, this was, you know, whether we're, we ourselves fast-track. And this doesn't, this is, I know a endorser proposed this, but we do fast-track a lot of things in our meetings as well. But this was presented to L U C during, as new business, before it was put in our packet, presented to us as new business. Okay. I don't know if, I don't know, I, I, I know it was one of you that was, and we can make a decision on it. And I think by next month, there's going to be a lot more community involvement and discussion on it then. But to me, it doesn't seem unfair to. L U C saw it as new business, now it's our turn to see it.
Okay, well, um, in that case, I, I guess I'd just like to state for the record that I'd really like to see us breaking this habit of squeezing things under the wire. If they, really, anything this important, but any business coming, all of us are well aware of the meeting dates. I would like to see the, stop this habit of having resolutions that are made so last minute, they can't make it into the meeting packets. We just did it again tonight, seems to be a regular habit and that is not a way to make reasoned policy. This thing is huge. So I think that having squeezing it into L U C when, again, it was not on the agenda, it was not in the meeting packet, and those of us who were at the meeting were kind of blindsided by it. And G H E C, no members that I know of G H E C were notified of it or consulted. So I would like to see us generate better habits about it. But with that in mind, I'm going to concede the point and Mike, please introduce.
Okay, I'll introduce this fairly briefly, because I think we, yeah, it's getting on a bit, people have, people have probably read it already. So we have a problem now. Gee, well, before we go any further, I'll just correct one, perhaps misunderstanding from earlier. In general, major changes for, major changes, definitely permanent changes, including future changes in zoning, et cetera, are far better and far easier if, if they're in alignment with comprehensive plan. So when we get the new comprehensive plan adopted, we'll be in a much better position to make major changes in the future. That's absolutely true. The adoption of the comprehensive plan, although it's going to be presented to the community at the end of February, we expect the final review draft to be available at the end of February. It will not be submitted to P and Z in April 15th, current schedule. P and Z will then not hear it until June. And it's a at least two or three month process to go through, like, well, it's at least a two month process to go through planning. They have to hear it one meeting, make a decision and then formally approve a resolution the following meeting. And then typically it's another one to two months for, for it to go through until it arrives at the assembly. So if we take the, for example, recently the trails plan.
I'm sorry, point of order. Will you please introduce your motion?
Yeah, I'm just going to finish my point.
No, actually, Mike, I'm asking you not to. What I'm telling you is that I think that we're off topic here and I'm not going to get into a discussion. You want a broader point of the.
Earlier we stated that if we wait 30 days, this will be resolved in the.
No, that is not what I said. And this is, this is exactly the kind of cross conversation that I want us to stop. Will you please introduce your proposal?
Just to clarify for anyone listening, the 30 days thing was not the correct statement, it's several months.
That was not the statement, but I will not get into a discussion without this. Will you please?
Do we actually, I'm just wondering, point of order, can we look at the, can we just look at the, I think the language you used earlier about the, the conduct behavior? Because it sounds like it's varying, veering away from that some of that.
Okay, all right.
I think all of us should just review it.
No, actually, with due respect, it is quarter to 10 and we have a huge thing here in front of us. So if you're going to, if you want to review that, you're going to have to make a motion that we stop all business and do so. But otherwise, if you could please, we have community members on line.
Sure, okay. So going back to the, the item in front of us, we have a problem now with a lack of, a lack of affordable housing, as everybody knows. It is going to take two to three years to resolve that through new construction. Uh, we do not have the option, Anchorage does have the option of converting existing buildings into low-cost housing. We do not have that option in Girdwood. We therefore have a two to three year window where we are not going to have any solution in place for a problem which exists now. Uh, we also have a, we have a problem now with camping, as we've heard earlier. Uh, there is nowhere to, there is nowhere in the community for, for that to be done in a legal and manageable way. In Anchorage, they have been looking at the topic of sanction camping. I do not think that's something that will work well in this community. However, what we do have is a number of, many employers who have businesses here who would like to be part of the solution and would like to provide additional housing for their staff and really for employees in general, not even necessarily their staff, throughout the community. And regulation gets in the way. So what this proposal is, is a temporary moratorium on some of the more difficult regulations around the requirements for permanent housing. So we allow employers, primarily as those who are commercial land or employers, we allow them to be part of the solution. So what this proposal is, is typically something that I think a lot of free enterprise folks like of reducing regulatory hurdles for employers to be, to propose solutions and to make solutions that work for the community. That's it, that's it in a nutshell. There's some details in here, there's an attempt to define what affordable housing is. There's some ideas about how we, how we avoid this becoming, you know, just a way to construct, you know, visitor accommodation, villages, tru- and rentals, et cetera. This is a starting proposal, the intent of this is to introduce it, so we get plenty of feedback from the community and we're hearing some of that, which is great. And hopefully that's what we get. So I'm interested, very interested in what the board has to say about this. And any other thoughts from the community.
Do we have anything else on this right at the moment? Do you have any comments from the board?
I have questions.
Yes.
So that, amending the, these, uh, code, 2109 and things like that. What? Did you say, are you having processes now, like, you can just?
The, the process, yeah. So the process is how this would, if we go to do this path now and it would be implemented, is it would, an assembly member, at least one assembly member who has to sponsor it. It would then go to the assembly, typically it goes to the assembly first and the assembly can decide whether it has to be referred to planning and zoning or not. If it has to be referred to planning and zoning, it's a multi-month process. If it doesn't, then the assembly can take action themselves at the next assembly meeting. And they go through the normal public hearing process, et cetera, for any reasons. But the assembly can change code and this, the way this would be implemented, have to be implemented district code change.
So it can be introduced on the night? No, because we haven't gone on.
Well, we, we, we don't, I don't think there's any likelihood that, I think we as a, we as a, we as a body, as GBOS, would have to probably approve this with enough detail that could then be implemented by, you know, by sponsorship of an assembly member. So I expect that GBOS will have to make a decision on it. And then an assembly member will take it, they will probably go through at least one work session or a committee meeting with it. And then it would be introduced to the assembly and then activated. And the assembly might decide to send it through planning and zoning to an admin board or something.
So in all likelihood, this is probably not going to fix the, the issue this winter.
Um, it's possible it could fix the win, fix the issue later on.
Change something, build a place and, you know.
Well, I mean, changing, changing also, yeah.
I, so I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, I just, I kind of want to get this in my head that.
Here's the question.
We're talking about making a change next week or making a change, which we got a next sun change next year, which is pretty soon, a lot sooner than any other, any other proposals that are out there, so.
Can I answer a different question, because, which might be the, might be another way of answering it. If the question is, what's the fastest this could possibly have an impact, realistically, it's probably two months at the absolute. One, two months after we make a decision, it's probably fastest realistic. And it could be three or four, but probably that time scale after we make a decision.
Right, that's the fastest. That's, that, the code would even be changed before the housing and people had places.
Right, now, it's not like there aren't solutions being proposed and implemented now. Um, what this is, is making it illegal. I mean, there, there's, it, it's about, you know, there are solutions, there are plenty of, you know, quote illegal or at least not conforming, um, housing within Girdwood, the people in it. Um, what this is, is to try and bring it back into the fold.
That was kind of my first, and I have all, most of the other questions, but I would.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't know what the, uh, as a board member, I can, I can approach it anytime and then we can discuss this.
Oh, yeah.
And not any, and, and of course, any person from the outlet could.
But if you have any particular comments that you think would be valuable now, that's a good point to say.
I, I had made one about some kind of safety that could.
Yes.
There, so people don't gas themselves to death.
I think you mentioned good points last time.
But I keep, I don't even know about it. Is this, have you talked to the business owners or?
Yes, this, this actually came from, um, well, I've had many discussions with quite a few people, but this, this follows, follows kind of an approach that somebody's trying to do now. Uh, and they kept on hitting regulatory problems and problems with code, because the code, basically the way code works now says, first of all, you cannot have any housing in commercial, in commercially certain areas, number one. And, and number two, the, the code basically says you can't have temporary structures of any sort, except under very limited circumstances while you're building a house. You can live in a, a one-story building house next to it for one season, that's it. Um, so the way code is written now stops us from implementing a lot of things that would help in the two-to-three-year time scale. Um, and because we can't do anything permanent within that time scale, it kind of puts this barrier in front of us and stops employers from being part of the, part of the solution here.
One more question, has the municipality amended this code to accommodate temporary housing? Have they done this?
Um, the assembly isn't going down this path, because they have different solutions. I mean, what they're trying to, what they've been doing is they've been dealing with, um, with the problems of, um, housing by, um, by basically taking buildings that are not used, you know, hotels, that are not being used as hotels, converting it to low-cost housing by nonprofits doing that primarily. Uh, we just don't have that option. We have to, the problem is, we have to construct something, and that means we can't have a solution this year, or late winter, or whatever.
But no, not to lie, no, but yeah.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, uh, thanks, Mike. I think you, um, explained it really clearly and well when you introduced this at this meeting as well, and I remember years ago, a business owner in Girdwood desperately trying to find staff housing and they took it um, upon themselves to try to, to do that and kept running into zoning issues and explain that at a meeting, but they are not able to attend meetings when they're working every staff. So this is a, a way that we can help empower the employers to help their staff. And it doesn't mean they're going to do it, it's just the option. Uh, and we, we have a very serious problem, so it's urgent and I think we can do to help. And once an assembly member is able to s- to sponsor it, um, it'd be a great, great step for Girdwood.
Thank you both for your work on this. I see a couple hands up. Um, Brett.
Right, thanks. So just briefly, I know it's late, but, um, yeah, I can't wait for the robust discussion in committee to, uh, tear into this one. Um, but my summary of it, um, is that it just opens it up to Girdwood being a mobile home park. And that's the corridor coming into Girdwood in that zone. So I've got some real issues with the permanent nature of this temporary resolution. This could have simply been summed up with, uh, allowing conditional use permitting uh, and allow an applicant to do something along that lines without opening up rent-controlled, uh, semi-permanent small home structures uh, on commercial lots. It will definitely change the character of the town, and that's why unintended consequences are always something that should be considered. Um, so I look forward in committee to getting down in this, because even the sunset clause of equating this to X, you know, so many affordable workforce housing units um, is, uh, fraught with, uh, other considerations like code changes that could simply limit A D U use to long-term rentals. And by making, uh, maybe code changes in that way, we open up further long-term rental opportunities. So I think that this detail, um, this detailed proposal would significantly change the character of the town. And if there are a handful, it's been noted that there are several, but I've not heard the quanti- that been quantified. Um, but I think that, um, there would be an opportunity for individual commercial operators to apply for conditional use and not open up the entire town to look like a small mini mobile home park, so. Anyway, we'll, uh, take this up in our next meeting for certain. I'm sure there'll be some great input and discussion uh, along the lines of solutions that could accomplish similar outcomes.
Thank you, thank you for your feedback, Brett, Patty. Actually, let me have, I know, but we are so short on time, I know, I'm it understands you're frustrated with me. Uh, what I would ask is that could we maybe uh, hear from the people that already have their hands up? Uh, we can, there is.
Move to step seventeen.
Second.
I'm going to go with consensus on that, since it was seconded twice. But what I would still like to do is, is just hear from the people on the list and then have a chance for not too much back and forth.
There's actually just, yeah, I don't, can I, there is one thing, I'd like to say there is actually a correction to this, um, which is kind of obvious if you read it. The, uh, the table at the end has the letter P for permitted, and it should be S for so. So it's, and I think Brad was suggesting it should be a C for conditional use. Valuable suggestions, thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. Um, Patty. Patty, you have your hand up. Are you, uh, are you available?
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay, yeah, sorry about that. Had to roll into, hey, I was just kind of real curious, you know, I followed this on the, on the L U C. And, um, and then it came, you know, I, I've been following the G H E C and then trying to keep a lot of the employers as the chamber informed of what everybody's doing, because I know that the employers are exceptionally interested in, you know, figuring out work, um, workforce housing. I am curious, because I hadn't heard about this prior, you know, I would have thought after talking to a lot of people, I would have, could you, um, I'm just, how many employers or was there a survey done that kind of let them know that? And have, have the employers actually been, you know, si- you know, sat down and, and explained that, you know, what this says as for rent control and and a bunch of other different aspects of it. And I'm just curious, because that, you know, that seems to me that it is a really big change that's being brought. And then, you know, what are the unintended consequences with it? Um, you know, that we're not seeing at the present moment. So that's just, you know, some of the concerns I've had, and I just wanted to raise those up. Thank you.
Okay, in that case, that was a very direct question. Uh, would either one of you like to address that?
I personally have had this, had a discussion with three different employers um, before this was presented to L U C. Uh, and I've reached out to several since, several others since.
Okay, and I, I want to make sure we end up with time for everyone to speak, but did you have a quick, um, follow-up on that, Patty?
Um, yeah, I mean, three, we have eighty-seven in the, in the, in the valley. That's kind of, I think we need to have more discussion and find out what others, others think. Thank you.
How many, how many of that larger number themselves have employees rather than a one-person businesses? My understanding is that's much smaller.
But, but, but you're, but, and just, and I'll, I'll skid off, because I know it's late. Um, I read your proposal, when it doesn't specify, specify, um, specify exactly employers, it just says commercial lots. So it really does raise the question, if an individual, i.e. a person along Alie's highway that has a place could hire somebody and then say, hey, you're going to do my snow removal, and they're an employee and do the same thing. So I just, I just think that it is not as clear as it could be, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patty. I want to move to, uh, Linay. That is Linay, right, at Alie's Highway?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
You're mute, you're muted, Linay.
Hey, Linay, we can't hear you. I think you're still muted. All right. All right, tell you what, well, Linay, let me tell you, uh, see if you can figure that one out and if we can get you off mute. And in the meantime, I want to make a quick announcement while you're figuring that out. Um, that I believe we have a date and a time for this special meeting, which is December twenty-eighth, Thursday, December twenty-eighth, from ten AM to noon. So doing that. Um, all right, Linay, we're not, I'm not seeing you come off mute, so, uh, let me just ask if we have any other questions online or from the board? And whether or not we might be forgot this stuff.
Oh, one, one, Linay is, uh, is finding the extra mute button. I often find I have two or three. The, the purpose of introducing this, getting it out into the community for discussion is to get kind of feedback on that so far. So what I'm hearing is concerns about, I mean, telling the consequences is completely reasonable. Definitely concerns about R Vs. Um, that's one of the, one of the options, it doesn't have to be an option. Um, we're just trying to find, we're trying to find solutions that could work. Um, I keep hearing rent control, there's nothing in here about rent control, there's a definition of what affordable is, uh, which is a similar definition to elsewhere in code and other communities. So I think that's a mischaracterization or misunderstanding. Um, but yeah, this, uh, this sort of feedback is very, very valuable. So, uh, the purpose of, the purpose of having this out there is we can get these kind of questions, especially for unintended consequences. There's been a few comments around those lines of, uh, of, you know, this can potentially can provide disincentives for where we need to be eventual.
Genuinely. Yes, uh, this is Brianna. I would just add that in the last minutes from this topic, uh, Margaret encouraged community to write their thoughts to Mike or myself, so that way we can have something updated at the next meeting or the next, if there's another version of this to come through. So instead of, um, taking up meeting time, which is also fine, uh, if we have those comments in our time away from meetings to be productive, that would be great. So feedback from community, please. Always better.
Uh, and so can I just add? In light of that, the one piece of feedback I've heard is some concern over, um, the, the potential need to, like, R Vs, if it is an RV thing, is easier to tow, but with temporary structures, there can be a big issue with what to do in the case of that, uh, either starting out illegal or becoming illegal after some point. So, anyway. But we can leave it at that, because I do think there, there will be robust discussion about this. I really do appreciate the work you do on this. I know that it is tough to be action-oriented around stuff that is going to, uh, automatically generate a lot of emotion. So thank you, genuinely thank you for the work you guys have done on this. And is, if there is nothing else, I believe we've gone through everything, Margaret. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Let's do it.